I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
I'm here.
Councilmember Kostick.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And Councilmember Cersei.
Here.
Great, we have no changes to our agenda this evening. Looking at agenda moving forward, next week on Wednesday, July 1st, we will meet again at 7:30. We'll begin our meeting with a youth council update. Our voting session will include a single reading ordinance awarding FY21 community grants. We also have a voting item on an emergency ordinance suspending portions of the city code related to the postings of signs. That is already posted on the city website and the city manager in her comments will talk about the suspension of the emergency order. That had been in place the last few weeks. Our work session on July 1st, there are three of them, will do the tree ordinance amendments, tree pack canopy goal resolution and an election update. As a reminder, Friday, July 3rd and Saturday, the 4th on Independence Day, our holidays and the city offices are closed. On Wednesday, July 8th, we're back again at 7:30. Our voting items is a resolution adopting tree canopy goals, our first reading ordinance amending the tree ordinance. We have a number of work sessions on the 8th. One is the to discuss the library exterior design. As people may have seen, there is a quick survey going out to just gather some information and feedback from people on the exterior design. We also have an election ordinance work session that night, charter amendments to accommodate election by mail, election code revisions to accommodate vote by mail, and we will have a work session on an FY21 budget amendment number one. Then on Wednesday, July 15th, 7:30, we will start with a public hearing on charter amendments to facilitate an election by mail. Our voting session that evening will include first reading charter amendment resolution, first reading ordinance approving FY21 budget amendment number one, first reading ordinance amending the election code, first reading election ordinance and a second reading ordinance amending the tree ordinance. Our work sessions include a check-in on the COVID-19 response and MML legislative action requests. Just to make sure everyone knows, we will be meeting on Wednesday, July 22nd and on Wednesday, July 29th, to make sure that we have time to vote on all the amendments and charter changes that need to be made in order to facilitate a vote by mail for our election this year. So that is it for updates. So now we will move to public comments. The first person signed up tonight is Mr. David Borden. As a reminder, everyone has three minutes. Please state your name and where you live in the city.
Hi, is my microphone working?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Borden. Yeah.
Thank you. I'm David Borden, Houston. And you, thank you for the opportunity to comment this week. The concern I was to raise is inconsistency, if not lack, with regard to social distancing and mask-wearing by Tacoma Park police officers during their interactions with the public and with each other. Let me first say that of the three examples I've personally witnessed or heard a direct report of, none appear tense or otherwise negative. But I think it's important. First, I simply saw two police officers in front of the municipal building having a conversation, neither wearing masks and clearly closer than six feet. In the second case, a friend who had saw this since from TPBD with a matter involving his building was invited by the officer who responded to approach the car after the officer had rolled down his window. My friend noted to the officer that he wasn't wearing a mask and that they would be less than six feet apart. The officer said he wasn't worried about it. My friend answered that he was worried about it. Most recently, just last weekend, in fact, I saw a car stopped on the side of Carol with a police car behind it. I don't know if it was a traffic stop and it visibly it didn't feel like a non-consensual encounter. An individual from the car was standing engaged in a conversation with one of our officers with another person standing nearby. They were well under six feet apart again and neither were wearing masks. It is problematic for three reasons. One is that even though this happened outdoors, all of these situations happened outdoors, the combination of the close distance, in the fact that people were talking, which is a highly effective way of aerosolizing any viruses one might be carrying, and doing this for an extended period of time, the time involved in a whole conversation violates three of the four cardinal rules the public health experts have urged us to observe in this pandemic. Second reason, police officers have the potential to be the proverbial super-spreaders if they aren't careful because of how much time they spend out in the community as well as indoors with each other when not. The third is that this is a counterproductive example for the public when most, when our most visible public servants don't wear masks at times when they should be. It's one reason, even if small, why the US response to the pandemic is so poor to the point that the European Union is considering barring Americans from entering their member states when they open it up to others next month. The fact of our reopening proceeding here makes us more important, not less. I hope TPBD will mandate officers observe appropriate social distancing and mask-wearing and that they will issue a notice to the public that the department has established this policy, urging community members to act rigorously in this way as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening. All right, next, do we have Ms. Cordis? Is she with us yet?
Yes, she's with us.
Okay, next is Colleen Cordis.
Colleen Cordis, Ward 1. This is an issue of racial justice, the health and safety of Park Ritchie residents. Next Wednesday, the county tower committee will reconsider a Verizon application to replace nine of the 33, yes, 33 cell antennas atop the Park Ritchie apartments. Park Ritchie provides affordable housing for many families of color. Last fall, the tower committee delayed a decision on this application thanks to Ms. Braithwaite, who's on the committee. She insisted on more information to confirm that levels of radio frequency radiation inside the building would be safe. Still, no one's done the kind of comprehensive independent onsite audit that's needed. Such a review should measure the actual current levels of emissions on top of inside and on the grounds of Park Ritchie and then calculate how Verizon's plan is likely to change that. The onsite audit should also document how well-guarded is access to the rooftops, are there warning signs and protective barriers? The study should measure what the exposure is for children leaning out of open windows. There were antennas mounted on the side of the building. A young child fell from an 11th floor window at Park Ritchie last year. Consider how sensitive it would be for residents who rent to organize on this issue, especially during a pandemic. Community vision for Tacoma urges you, their elected representatives, to step up on their behalf. First, honor their right to be fully informed, work with the property owner to be sure all residents find out about this application, and Verizon's report on radiation levels is part of it. That report is still inadequate, though. It's only based on computer simulations, not onsite measurements. Even worse, the software used to calculate radiation exposures inside the building where people live was not designed for estimating emissions inside buildings, so the results are not valid. Still, it has disturbing findings. It predicts that once the new antennas are in place, there will be places on the rooftop 25 times the FCC limit for the general public or five times the limit for trained workers. Verizon's revised study predicts there will be a small area of the residential top floor where emissions will be 50% of what the FCC allows. That's high enough to concern many people. As you know, there's a national controversy about how outdated the FCC's safety standards are. A growing body of science suggests negative health effects from exposure to wireless radiation at levels far lower than what the FCC allows. Verizon's report fails to even try to model what level of exposure residents next to or leaning out of windows would receive. Oddly, it just mentions in passing that there are some AT&amp;T antennas up there that already exceed FCC limits. But we learn nothing about what warning signs are up there now, who has access to the rooftop areas, what kind of barriers Verizon plans to use, et cetera, et cetera. In short, the county tower committee doesn't have the information to make an informed decision. We urge you to encourage Darrell to oppose this application until a full onsite review is done that fully engages residents. Please, ask the city manager to also work with county building inspectors and county health officials to review all building codes. Please honor Park Ritchie residents' right to safe shelter, not just their need for affordable housing. If this was luxury housing for white folks, would we be having this conversation? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rogers Legel.
Good evening. Rogers Legel, Allegheny Avenue, Ward 3. Last week Reverend Gail Fisher Stewart explained how policing, despite reform efforts, always averts to the function of protecting white power. To break that pattern, the first step is to make sure that our most vulnerable residents get the priority in designing new approaches. But there will be no permanent police reform until we reduce root causes of inequity, of course. This difficult work requires thorough data collection and non-stop proactive relationship building. The city's current practice of offering racial equity considerations rather than assessing actual impacts is ineffectual because we don't know who writes these consideration statements, what roles people of color have in their preparation, and what metrics, if any, are being used. So these superficial statements can come across as window dressing for decisions already reached rather than as drivers of decision-making. Having the best intentions means nothing without a well-informed, well-designed strategy and a clear objective. A case in point is the looming threat of evictions and foreclosures when moratoriums expire on July 25th. Nothing would undermine equity goals further than to have the COVID-19 pandemic result in economically strapped residents forced expulsion from town. Grace Wiggins's June 10th presentation listed the many barriers residents face in terms of language, awareness, documentation, and technology access, and it outlines set-asides such as $150,000 for rent payment assistance and $50,000 for mortgage assistance. Well, here, the importance of metrics and data collection becomes crucial. For instance, the $150,000 set-aside is geared to provide $200 a month for 250 families for three months. How was this target number derived? What if the needs are far greater? How serious are we about helping every single household that needs it? I propose that the council commit today to a simple principle. Nobody has to move out of Tacoma Park because of COVID-19. This goes for renters, condo dwellers, and homeowners. Enlist volunteers to help staff spread this message rapidly to every household in every language via every possible medium. Make the process simple. Text or call this number to open a case. Utilize volunteer navigators to help staff assess needs and help with documentation. Then tabulate monetary needs and source aid, starting with the county, with the city filling in gaps. Bring landlords into the process and maintain transparency to ensure that assistance is not predicated around personal relationships. Before you leave for August recess in five weeks, you should have a clear estimate of the amount of city money that will be needed, and you should be assured that every resident knows of the city's commitment to their staying in place. Doing this together as a community could be the first step toward a new economic approach that aims first to stabilize and build wealth and security for historically disadvantaged residents. Nobody has to move. Please commit to this concrete equity goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Jane McChewee.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you all, whoever was in charge of having the COVID testing tomorrow for free. I think it's helpful for residents who don't have, might not have the proper insurance. And there's no ID required, and I thank you very much. And second of all, I just want to go on my usual talk here about gentrification, especially in my neighborhood. The, as you all should know, I've been saying this for years, the average black person makes a lot less than the average white or Asian person. So the average black person cannot afford the homes that are being sold here in my neighborhood. I heard there's one three blocks from me that rent for over a million dollars, which is, to me, is ridiculous. And second of all, the closing of Shoppers Grocery Store, New Hampshire Avenue, there were a lot of black and brown people who were let go, and now they're going to have an upscale version of Aldi's, I understand, which I cannot afford to go to, and a lot of people can't afford to go to. And and I liked, another thing that ties in with disabilities is walking. We should be able to walk safely on both sides of the street. And this ties in with racism because all our male carers are black and brown people, and they can't, they have to walk in the street because some of these people around here don't think it's courteous to cut down their, even though it's city-owned property, refuse to cut down the vegetation so people can safely walk there, no matter what race or profession they are. And I'm sorry. Oh, I'm also, it's difficult for some people, especially as we get older, to read some of the newsletter articles and also some of the presentations you present here during the council meeting because they're eyesight especially if it's got a colored background or white on, white lettering on a colored background is especially difficult for us to read. And thank you very much, and you have a great evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. McChewee. Next, we have Jessica Landman.
Good evening. Jessica Landman, Ward 1. We learned this week that NDC plans to submit its barely revised design for Tacoma Junction to county officials for a vote in September. Now, you have said that the council would weigh in at the appropriate time, and now is the time before the design is finalized and submitted, or else you risk being on summer break as the developers slide their design under the door. And now is your time to rethink what we really need at the junction because times have changed. Let's review what's changed since this began. First of all, COVID-19 has thrown our local economy into a tailspin. Even if restaurants and retail can come limping back, they won't be able to afford higher rents. Office space owners don't know what to do to fill their existing empty buildings. Many people will never return to offices. But still, NDC plans to build high-rent restaurants, retail, and offices. Why? Second, the SHA has told us, first, this development cannot work with this intersection. And second, there is no money in their budget to change the intersection at least through 2025. So when will this design be scrapped? If not now, when? Third, many neighbors are suffering financially and physically, and our community has stepped in to help them. The co-op has turned out to be crucial to this community's COVID-19 response. Not only did the co-op transform itself into an online store, safe for shoppers and employees, they've also given freely of their co-op lot space to local groups staging food and pantry services. This public space is serving public needs. That is important. The Black Lives Matter movement is finally capturing the attention it deserves. Many black voices are speaking out, and the co-op has welcomed march organizers to use their lot as a staging ground. Again, we ask, how does giving up public space and endangering an oasis for black shoppers and workers make our town more equitable? Fifth, the climate crisis has prompted you to call for radical change in this city. You've said that everyone who lives here must be ready for such change. But what about the junction for which the city is actually a business partner? You still want to build a big underground garage? Are you going to forbid fossil fuels for this building? If you don't rethink it now and during this design phase, then when? Finally, we've now seen NDC in action locally. Look at the site that they own in Tacoma, DC. They hastily tore down our local 7-Eleven and left behind a boarded-up ice store. Nothing is happening at that site, probably because the investors have walked away. So when will you ask NDC whether they even have investors for the junction? Our guess is that they don't, but you need to ask them. This development was always a bad fit, and in our changed world, it has become financially and morally and ecologically unsustainable and unjustifiable. So in sum, please do not go on vacation and leave this matter unaddressed. Do not let inertia decide the fate of the junction and this council's views on it. Open your eyes to the drastic changes. Rethink the junction. Thank you.
All right, is Theodora with us?
She does not seem to be here. I have not seen her.
I can't turn off this ringer. Okay, there we go. Sorry. All right, then. Well, why don't we move on to council comments then? Does anyone on the city council have comments this evening? No one? I don't see any hands raised. There we go. Councilwoman Dibala.
Yes, thank you. It takes a little while sometimes to find the right button to raise hands with. A few things. One is last week, I went, I attended a Vision Zero county session on the beginning of their tenure planning process, and I call not so much the meeting to people's attention as the survey that they have launched to get input from county residents on biking, walking, et cetera, on county streets. And I will send that around to everybody on the council, and you all can get it out if you'd like. Secondly, the person who spoke about social distancing, I would like to just ask residents to remember that my mask protects you, and most importantly, your mask protects me. So that's, that's just something to keep in mind as you go around your business in town. I'm getting out more, I see that lots of other people are, but that's really, really pretty key. Earlier today, I participated in a National League of Cities meeting on local communities who have done climate planning and carbon-neutral planning during time of COVID. And I picked up a lot of tips about how to, how, how the two issues relate through the lens, through the racial equity lens and some of the, some of the things that other communities are doing to pursue that, that connection. And thank you for the COVID testing. It's very popular in Ward 2. And to the city staff and to the mayor, thank you so much for that. Just echoing residents. Thanks. And I think that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would just like to in the masks and our police department. I think as Councilmember Dibala said, you know, it's the wearing of the mask is not to protect yourself. It's to protect the other person. And I don't know what the rules are for our police department. It would seem to me, though, if we're community-oriented, we should be trying to protect our community members when we do have encounters with them. And so I would think the the officers should be wearing masks when they do communicate with the community member, whether whether it's a forced discussion or just answer questions unless that community member says, hey, look, I don't need you to wear a mask. But I should think it would be requirement of our police. And then I just also wanted to comment on the the discussion during public comments tonight about the cell towers on Park Ritchie apartments. I haven't seen any report from the the government, the county government, saying that things have been measured and everything is okay. And I don't know that, I don't believe that our city has done any measurements there. Obviously, the owner of the building has a bias on, because they're probably making money from those cell towers being on their building. So I think it's important that that we do look at whether or not the tenants in that building are safe. We worry about their safety with We worry about their safety with air conditioning and proper maintenance of the building. But I think this special case, we should also be concerned about their health and welfare. And I understand there are EMF meters that could be rented. Or we could contract with with a specialist who knows how to do the measurements. And I'm not sure that we have to be on top of the building to do that. We do have to be in tenants apartments around the top floor to see if they are being affected by radiation from these cell towers. So I would like to get feedback from the city manager on what we can do to help protect the the health and welfare of our tenants. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Siemens. Next, we have Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. First, I want to let everyone know that MML's virtual conference will be going on this weekend. I hope my colleagues have had a chance to register. It should be a really good conference. We tried to include as much as possible what you have in the in person conference in the virtual side. So it's only $95, should be a great conference. I would like to ask staff to answer the questions that Jessica Landman had regarding the junction. I think these are some really important points. The tenant mix regarding the project, the financial stability of the project. And, you know, with everything that is going on in the country and the world with Black Lives Matter, is this a direction that we should go? So it would be great if the mayor could put a work session on the agenda before we go into recess so we can discuss the junction and hear from staff and maybe NDC about if their plans have changed because of the economic circumstances and the pandemic that continues to plague the country. And finally, I want to thank Jackie and Doris for all their work regarding lunch and learn. We will have a virtual lunch and learn this year. And they are hard at work putting it together. Thank you.
Great, Councilwoman Circe.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. So a couple of quick updates. One, last night, had the opportunity to participate in the county's first virtual playground design meeting. It went really well. It was a great opportunity for residents to ask questions of county staff. They had some ideas in terms of potential options to just kind of give us some things to work with. But it was a really wonderful experience and definitely looking forward to, hopefully, by this time next year, having a new playground in Hillwood Manor. So want to thank all of the residents who called in and participated and asked their questions. We know, we hear you all loud and clear that we definitely want to make sure that we have a playground that is, matches the natural area and natural landscape. So I think everyone made that point really clear. So definitely looking forward to having continued discussions with residents, but also with county staff who's been super responsive. So thank you all for that. Also want to echo my appreciation to the mayor and to staff who worked to organize and lobby for tomorrow's COVID pop up. That will be at the Ubers Center tomorrow. There's a number of residents in Ward six in particular had a chance to talk to folks at Hampshire Towers and followed up with Grace Wiggins. And so we know that the word has gotten out, which is wonderful. So definitely looking forward to seeing how that works. Also had a chance today to go to the Crossroads Farmer's Market and had a chance to talk to the market manager. They are also excited about the opportunity to help us passing out flyers. For the city manager, one thing that I will note that we may want to make sure that we make clear to the county is that when we're in the Langley Park area, we may want to also coordinate with our Prince George's County colleagues. I don't know to what extent they may have the ability to test. But because of distancing issues, you know, we have a number of people who may have Tacoma Park addresses, but actually live in Prince George's County. And so when we're passing out the flyers and things, we just want to make sure that if it's possible, that we may be able to coordinate with not just Montgomery County, but also talk to some of our colleagues. And also, Councilmember Denise Taveras a note as well to see if there may be some possibilities of Prince George's doing something similar. Again, to just make sure, because what I've heard is that the hotspot is also on the Prince George's side as well, and you people walking across the street, right? So that is something we definitely want to make sure that we make our Montgomery County colleagues aware of. And other than that, want to give a special thanks to Darryl Braceway and Ian. I know that we've been finishing up a lot of paving work in the New Hampshire Gardens community, as well as some of the new speed bumps that the council just voted on. We're moving quite quickly, we're trying to get those installed. So just want to ask for residents to keep an eye out because we will try to have another Zoom meeting just to answer any other questions that folks may have about the paving and the raised intersection that was installed. But also to just make sure no one has any issues with the speed bumps that will be installed as well. So again, thank you all so much. Have a good one.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kostick.
Hi, everyone. Just a couple of quick updates. First of all, I had an opportunity on Monday to present as part of a curbside management forum that the Transportation Planning Board put together. And I believe I saw a couple of our staff members on the forum as well from the planning department, which was great to see. And it was a really interesting discussion. And there's, there are plans for future discussions as well to really discuss as a region how we can be planning for some of the newer trends with regard to curbside management in terms of different delivery types. There was some talking about, you know, the potential for drone deliveries in the future, the potential for bike, more kind of larger scale bike deliveries to reduce emissions for, you know, Amazon type delivery services, as well as Uber and Lyft drop offs, pickups, and just kind of some new uses of the curbside that haven't been used in the recent past. And I also had the opportunity to represent the Access for All Committee, which is a committee of the Transportation Planning Board that had expressed some concerns on accessibility issues. And so it was a good opportunity to have that discussion as well. And I think longer term, there are going to be some really interesting regional cooperation opportunities and opportunities to just learn from each other about what's working and what's not working. I also plan to attend the Maryland Municipal League Conference this upcoming weekend. Very happy and excited to have a chance to to do that and to have it still be happening despite the the reason, you know, that the challenges in meeting in person. So I really appreciate the planning that's gone into that. I would also be interested in hearing from the city manager on the, some information on the Park Ritchie measurements. And and then finally, I just wanted to give a shout out as my colleagues have. Thank you to the mayor and to city staff for organizing the COVID testing. I think that will be a really important opportunity for people to access testing that who might not be able to otherwise.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of things I just want to add. My thanks to the city staff, particularly our deputy city manager, Jessica Clark, Grace Wiggins, Vince Kane, and and our rec department head, Gray Clark, for all their work that has gone into making sure that this pop up happens tomorrow. It came up pretty quickly after a lot of months of advocacy. And we're glad to have it tomorrow. As a reminder to folks, this is the first time the county is doing this community pop up. I know the city manager has more information in her comments. But it's really important also that we, if you are getting tested tomorrow or if you did sign up, if you have feedback, to please send it to us because we want to make sure that this happens, goes forward for the city in other places and in other locations around the county and as well as Councilwoman Circe remarked, with Prince George's as well. And so thank you on that. If you have comments, please send them in. On the other thing I want to announce is there on Monday evening, on the 29th, there's a webinar, Protecting Yourself, Your Family, Simple Wills, Health Directives and Guardianships. It's from seven to eight 30 PM. The City of Tacoma Park is hosting this to provide you with information about the basic tools to protect yourself and your family, including simple wills and other important documents. And so we can make that information available to you if you want to sign up for that. But I know there are a lot of people that we've heard from lately who can use some legal advice right now or think about different directions. And so hopefully that will be helpful. And again, I want to thank our city staff for providing these types of webinars to our residents.
Mayor, if I might interrupt, the the information about how to sign up is on the on the city's website.
Okay. Perfect. Awesome. All right. Let's see, oh, Councilmember Kovar, sorry, I missed your hand before.
Yeah, thank you. For some reason, the hand raising thing wasn't working that well. So thank you, no problem. Just two things. One, last night, there was a virtual meeting by Montgomery College, another in the series they've been doing about the science building project over there. This one focused on trees, stormwater, landscaping and some of those issues. And for people who are interested who weren't able to be on the meeting, they did provide a better, more detailed map of the trees that were planned to be taken down and replaced and so on. And there's dozens and dozens of trees that would come down as a result of the project under the current plan. And that includes some trees that are within the footprint of the new structure. And so there's not much choice about that. There are others that are not in good condition physically. There are still others that are in close proximity to where various utility work has to be done. So there's a whole range of those things. That still has to go through the tree commission because of appeals that were filed by residents. But if anybody's interested in seeing the chart, which I think is much more user friendly than the previous ones, feel free to be in touch with me. And there's also, there was also quite a bit of discussion about stormwater issues. And I think we'll be having a separate meeting on that. So for anybody who's interested in either of those, feel free to get in touch with me. And then I just wanted to mention on the Tacoma Junction Development, I've been having conversations to try to understand better the timing and the order in which the various things would happen. And I think that still is somewhat amorphous. And so I think it would be very helpful to get from from staff and other, the other entities that are involved in is a better indication for what the timing looks like when the various steps in this process will take place. Because it does seem to me as if the different phases are interconnected to each other. And just having a better idea of what the timing actually looks like would be helpful. So I think if the staff can either connect us with the decision makers or provide that information would be very helpful in order to decide how to proceed going forward. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. Next, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
All right, thank you. Number of items to cover. I think I'll start with a couple of things that are not on my city manager comments report, but have been raised this evening. One is related to the police and any city staff wearing masks. Masks are required if somebody is within six feet of another person or within our buildings. And so I appreciate if somebody can report a situation where they do see that. I've made it very clear to staff that wearing of masks is a very important process of keeping our community safe and keeping our other coworkers safe. So I'm always disturbed when I hear of situations where appropriate mask wearing is not being, taking place. If somebody is working in a field and there's not other people around, we're not requiring masks during that time. But if any, if there's anything that's close to another person, they are to wear masks. There was a question about the Tacoma Junction project. We will make sure that we get out information on timing. I'm quite, I believe that there's not, it's not likely that NDC would go before the planning board as soon as September. We've had a number of discussions. So whereas somebody may be pushing for that, I don't see that as a realistic possibility. And it's something that there's a number of steps yet to go. So we will get a correct information and share that with council and the community about the timeline. And finally, not also on my list, has to do with the Park Ritchie project. I'll need to get more information from Darryl Braceway and share that about kind of the the measurement processes and whatever. But I know that Mr. Braceway's been working on that very hard and has been on top of that information. And that there's a community meeting also to discuss that. Like to talk for a minute about Phase Two reopening in Montgomery County and some of the impacts that it has on Tacoma Park. As Montgomery County has moved into Phase Two reopening, which was last Friday at 5:00 PM, we, some of the actions that I've taken in the past, I think, can be changed. One has to do with the sign ordinance, and the mayor mentioned this briefly at the beginning of the meeting. On June 2nd, I temporarily suspended the ban on posting signs in the public right of way. At that time, no groups of more than 10 people could gather. Now that larger sized groups can gather, residents are not limited to posting signs to share one's opinion to the public. For that reason, the temporary suspension of the ban on posting signs in the right of way will end by July 9th. The state allows sufficient time for the city council to take action on the sign provisions if it so chooses. And my understanding is that that that's something that would be addressed, I believe, even as soon as very shortly, July 1st, I believe. Like to also note that in late March and then in April, I authorized hazard pay for many of our essential staff. And they were at different levels based on the level of potential hazards that they might face. Since that time, we've learned a lot more about how the COVID-19 virus is transmitted. We have a number of safety protocols in place, including mask wearing. So that's very important. But also social distancing, enhanced cleaning. Hazard pay, in my view, is no longer merited for the staff of the City of Tacoma Park. Many jurisdictions have already stopped paying it in the area. And I've kind of delayed because Tacoma Park had a higher level of COVID-19 than other parts of Montgomery County. But I think we are at the point where it's no longer justified. So I've communicated that to the unions and staff. The hazard pay will continue through Saturday, July 4th, and it might be reinstituted if conditions change in the future. So these are conversations that we're having with our staff about how to safely work in our, in our facilities and in the, in the public realm. On other COVID-19 information, our building closures are going to continue for some time. And we will have a few extra staff in the building that have been, then have been in the building in the past because the courts are opening. So there's some need for being available for getting public records for court cases and that kind of thing. The Neighborhood Services team will be more active and there'll be information coming out from the police department about when they will be kind of re-upping their services, doing code enforcement and as well as education on our various environmental codes and and property codes. I think that they may not start kind of in the offices until July 6th. Although the city facilities are close to the public, the police lobby is is open and police emergency services are always available. There have been some questions that I've received about where can people drop things off for the city? If the buildings are closed, they can come to the police lobby and If the buildings are closed, they can come to the police lobby, and there will be packages and those kind of thing will be accepted there. Masks are required when you're in the building, and we have a traffic flow path to follow. As a number of people have mentioned, we have our first pop-up, walk-up COVID testing tomorrow at the rec center. It is free. It doesn't require insurance. We're doctors' order. It's designed for people without symptoms. The appointment window closed today at 2:00 PM. I understand 423 people have signed up. That's awesome. So, we have arrangements about how to manage traffic and how to encourage the process to work well. As the mayor mentioned, you know, we want to hear some feedback about what works and what doesn't work because we want to have many more of these kinds of testing sites. As to the situation with Prince George's County, we will follow up because I really do believe that Prince George's County residents should be able to take advantage of that. I will say Montgomery County residents are allowed to come to the Prince George's County open testings. So, got to make it work for both sides of the line. I do want to note that Mayor Stewart really worked hard to get the testing. So, she's been giving some kudos for that. It's well merited. But I also do note that we've had quite a city staff team doing, working on the logistics because this is not easy to do. It just, it has been kind of all hands on deck. Jessica Clark, Grace Wiggins, Greg Clark, Vince Kane, and Donna Wright, as well as our IT staff and our police staff and our city TV staff, all are involved in this effort. And what I've really appreciated is that we've, the staff has been very thoughtful about the kind of information that residents would need to feel comfortable to come test. What is it that's involved? What will they be asked? Will they be contaminated by coming there? What are all those kinds of things that people would want to know? And I was glad to see that, glad to hear anecdotally, we'll see tomorrow, that a number of the folks who had signed up were bringing their whole families because that is something that we are encouraging and really does make a difference about how we get back to, how do we get to reopening in the Tacoma Park area? Montgomery County Health and Human Services staff have been a good partner on this, and I appreciate their hard work. Speaking of COVID-19, again, we got our first reimbursement from FEMA for one of our submissions. We've, our submission for $28,000 was approved because it's FEMA. You get 75%. They pay 75%. And so, we'll get $21,304.25 from our first submission. We will have, we're preparing for our second submission soon. We're still working on our Tacoma Park Library Books to Go program. We're waiting for the okay from the Health Department from Montgomery County. The Montgomery County libraries are starting theirs on July 6th. So, that may be when we start. But if we are able to get an earlier start, we will do so. Many of you may have seen the Laurel Avenue Tacoma Streetery setup. We've been trying to see how it goes, how to make it attractive without having too many people crowding. And so, there's been a little bit of a balance there. I want to thank Tacoma Bevco for agreeing to monitor and clean chairs and tables that have now been set out there. And, you know, there's going to be kind of children's games chalked down and space for yoga or sitting in kind of uncomfortable chairs in different places and all that's being worked on. We're looking for some of the same kind of fun stuff, even on the sidewalk along Ann Street and some other things. So, Ms. Cersei will be checking in with you on some of the ideas to make it fun, but also not attract too many people, but to have it a fun place. I do want to note a discouraging item that I'm upset about is that a number of signs that were out on the Tacoma Streetery were stolen last night. They were Black Lives Matter, Tacoma Pride, Pride flag, a number of things on the block of the Tacoma Streetery were stolen last night. So, that has been reported to police, and we're investigating. So, if somebody knows about that, please let the police department know. You can contact Chief DeWolff if you are familiar with what might have happened. Want to switch?
Before you switch, excuse me, one more, sorry about that, one more COVID-related question.
Sure.
I, I believe that there will be a socially distant outdoor recreation program for seniors on Saturday morning at Zumba Gold in the rec center parking lot. Is that cool? The one? Or is that part of a trend that, that, you know, we may be doing socially distant library books? We're doing socially distant Laurel Avenue and Ann Street. And so, what's the deal with the rec department?
I don't, I don't know that answer. I do know that they have a whole list of things that they would love to try that are outside. But I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't know about that one. So, I know they're working.
It might be just a pilot, and I might have just gotten invited because I'm already enrolled. But that's great that the staff is working on stuff like that. Thank you.
They're really excited about it, yes. So, one of the things that has come up and been raised by some of our residents about changing the names of city streets, it was a discussion with before council some time ago. And with the National Black Lives Matter efforts spurring changes to statutes and street names, the Montgomery County Council also indicated that they wanted to see a number of street names changed in Montgomery County. There was an assumption that that would not apply to the City of Tacoma Park, but it does. Montgomery County is the entity that addresses street names in Tacoma Park. And so, I don't know the exact process, if this moves forward at the county level to change how they change street names. But we would want to be part of that. So, that discussion would come before council. So, there was questions, just assuming because the, one of the letters just referred to just county streets. Even though they are city streets, the naming of the streets is done by Montgomery County. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Hey, just ask a quick question on that. Is there, or has there been communication between staff and the county staff working on this? Just so that there's sort of a line of communication and we're updated and can advocate to make sure we're not left behind on this issue?
There have been, there's been some, and there's three different people working on it. So, I'm not exactly sure what the, what the exact line is. So, I'll get back to you when I know. The last thing I just want to note is it's Independence Day coming up on July 3rd and 4th. And as the mayor mentioned, staff will not be working on Friday, July 3rd, other than our essential employees. I do want to urge people to, as they're planning for the holiday, really think about social distancing, small gatherings only. But also, no fireworks are permitted in Montgomery County. That's not new for this year. It's this year, it's the situation every year, but it really is dangerous. The fireworks are dangerous. And this is not the time to have to go to the hospital because you've had a fireworks accident. And so, please, I know people are disappointed about major fireworks displays not taking place in Tacoma Park and in surrounding jurisdictions. You just pass it up this year. It's okay. I just want to let folks know that it's dangerous. There's a reason it's banned in Montgomery County, and we hope that you stay away from the fireworks for the 4th of July. But have a good time. Those are all the items that I had this evening, Mayor.
I know Councilmember Kovar has a couple of questions.
Sure.
I just figured I'd wait till the end. But these relate to one of the points you were talking about specifically on the enforcement staff and getting back into action. And there are two or three things connected to that that I just wanted to get your reaction to. So, one is just to make sure that we won't be getting parking tickets because that was extended until August. And I think, as I mentioned before, I have at least one resident who came in from being out of the country and so doesn't have a sticker at all. And they were told they didn't need to. So, just want to make sure that's still the case.
Yes.
Okay. And then, secondly, I've heard from people about two different aspects of this where some of the really important food giveaway programs that are taking place, which are essential for what we're, what we're doing to try to respond to COVID-19. And I'm not talking about city programs, but non-protestant and local groups that are doing it. But there have been questions raised about traffic. And so, this is both at the middle school. And then also, there's going to be a program this weekend, I think on Saturday, by the events church in Old Town. And given the proximity to Laurel, which is now closed off, and I do appreciate that Bevco is helping out there. I don't know whether our enforcement staff could help just in terms of ensuring that the traffic flows. But because I did hear from people at the middle school, very worthwhile program, but we don't want to have unsafe traffic situations to play around.
That would be something from our regular police department. And I know that the chief was familiar with the item that you've mentioned, the location that you mentioned, but I'll double check what the status is.
And the last thing, and this also is in the same category. I think you're aware that there's several requests pending, and there are probably more than I know about for different street closures.
Right.
And I think the staff and you are working on a new approach to that because previously it couldn't really be authorized because of the social distancing. I don't know whether that's changed or how close you are to figuring that out. And you don't have to tell me the answer now, but if that's in the works, it would be helpful to know.
It's in the works. I don't have the complete answer, but we are trying not to hold people up either.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. And I'll just mention to follow up on the, the street names. I do know the Commemoration Commission has been working also at looking at a suggestion for Jackson Boyd Park. And I believe that they're trying to get together a Zoom call and present recommendations to the council. So, I know there were a number of questions about that. And just like the street names, Jackson Boyd Park has been on our agenda for a while to look at changing the name of that park. And so, they're going to come to us with some recommendations on that.
And for that, and for that, that is the jurisdiction of the city council?
Yes. Yep. So, we can probably move a little faster on that one. Okay. So, now moving on to our work sessions for this evening. We are, first up is our Grants Review Committee report and recommendations for FY21 grants. I know we have a number of people with us from the Grants Committee and the city staff. First, I just want to say welcome to them. And also, wow, like, your report is amazing. Thank you so much for that and all your hard work. It's great to review that. And in particular, very grateful to see the racial equity work that the, we've been doing in the city become part of the work that you're doing. I know these processes take, you know, time to work through and look at how we apply this. But I was glad to see that you all just were, you know, really doing it and applying it to your work this year. So, thank you so much. Ms. Wiggins, am I turning it over to you first, or Ms. Hale, or who goes first?
Yeah, it's going to be me.
Okay, Jennifer, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll start first, and Grace is going to start a PowerPoint that we'll run alongside. So, well, thank you for that. And good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to come before the council to discuss the FY21 Community Quality of Life Grant Program. I'm Jennifer Hale, Grants Coordinator for the City of Tacoma Park. And here comes a PowerPoint. In addition to other duties, I staff the resident-led Grants Review Committee and administer the Community Quality of Life Grants Program. When we launched the FY21 application for this program back in January, we couldn't possibly have known where we'd be today and all the implications of COVID-19. The application period for FY21 funding closed on March 12th. And the next day, as you all know, the city office is closed. Thankfully, last year, we developed an online application and cloud-based grants lifecycle management tool. Because of this, the Grants Review Committee was able to continue their review work remotely. During that review work, the lasting impacts of COVID-19 became clearer and clearer. And it was obvious that in all decision-making had to be seen through the lens of the health emergency we are all faced with. After a thoughtful and extended review and deliberation process, the Grants Review Committee has selected a slate of programs for FY21 that prioritize public health and safety, have the capacity to be provided virtually for the duration of FY21, and are, whenever possible, complementary with the city-funded COVID-19 relief priorities. So, tonight, I'll provide a brief overview of the Community Quality of Life Grant Program before I introduce two members of the Grants Review Committee. The review and deliberation process, funding considerations with regard to COVID-19 and race equity, and then we'll present the programs recommended for funding. So, right here on this slide, I can give you a quick overview, right? The Community Quality of Life Grant Program provides up to $10,000 for programs that deliver greater access and opportunities for participation in the arts and sciences for predominantly low and moderate income residents. As I frequently say, this isn't a grant program that supports nonprofits. This is a program that serves residents. It provides opportunities for engagement, learning, and community to those of greatest need in Tacoma Park. We know that the Community Quality of Life Grant Program can't meet every need, but what it can do is significant. In the past few years, this program has provided more than a half a million dollars in funding to more than 60 grant programs. And in FY21, the city council approved $80,000 to be awarded to eligible projects. With the goal of serving residents front and center, the Grants Review Committee has identified the best programming to serve residents during these challenging times. Next slide. In order to be considered for funding, there are three areas of eligibility that must be confirmed. First, the project itself must be eligible under the guidelines. It must either be an arts and humanities-focused program or a STEAM program, that's science, technology, engineering, and math. Additionally, while not required, this year, FY21 applicants were encouraged to demonstrate in their applications how their arts and STEM programs could connect residents with skills that promote job readiness for low and moderate income Tacoma Park residents. The second aspect of eligibility is the organization itself, which must be either a 501(c)(3) nonprofit or a 501(c)(6) business association. And finally, for a project to be eligible, it must reach the intended beneficiaries. 51% of program participants must be residents with low and moderate incomes, and 75% of program participants must be residents of the City of Tacoma Park. Next slide. By bringing new partners and new programming to Tacoma Park, the Community Quality of Life Grant Program is an ongoing source for new and innovative programming. Of the 22 applicants that submitted proposals in FY21, over one-third had never previously applied to this grant program. And of these, three were ultimately selected for funding recommendations this year, while seven returning grantees with demonstrated track records of success were also selected for funding, deepening the city's already strong, multifaceted relationship with high-performing grantees. The 10 programs selected for funding recommendations in the FY21 represent organizations of every size, from a large national nonprofit to small local nonprofits, and programs that serve residents of every age. As someone who used to apply for grants, I understand the competing responsibilities that our applicants and grantees balance every day. In the FY21 application, we've continued to reduce administrative burdens. In FY20, we moved the application online. In FY21, we reduced the number of application stages from two to one and reduced the number of required reports from five to three. In FY22, we anticipate utilizing eligibility quizzes to help prescreen applicants in real time so that only eligible programs and applicants apply, a change that will save time for both applicants and city staff. Another important change in the application process for FY21 came about as a result of Councilmember Cersei connecting city came about as a result of council member seriously connecting city staff with leadership at nonprofit Montgomery. Committee members Susan Rosenbloom, Rachel Branhaman, and myself participated in a metrics training that led to improvements in the FY twenty one application that we feel lay the foundation for a collection of meaningful program metrics in FY twenty one. Next slide. Now, numbers don't tell the whole story. And as I like to say, not everything that counts can be counted. But in this slide, you'll see a good picture of the total footprint of the Community Grants Program. If funded, the FY twenty one programs will benefit thousands of residents across hundreds of hours of programming and local events through partnerships with eighty-eight community organizations. Next slide. The last thing I want to leave you with before I turn it over to the committee members is that the city's investment of eighty thousand will be matched in FY twenty one three to one. While we only require a dollar-to-dollar match, most programs exceed that. By looking at the total project budgets, we get a clearer picture of the true value of this program. In FY twenty one, the city investment of eighty thousand will concentrate an additional nearly quarter of a million dollars in resources for a total program value of more than three hundred and twenty thousand. Next slide. I want to thank the Grants Review Committee. I think many, if not all, are on this call right now, this Zoom meeting right now, and two of whom will speak to you soon. I want to thank them all for their expertise, thoughtfulness, and commitment. Funding decisions are always hard to make, and there are always more good programs than can be funded. The residents that serve on the Grants Review Committee are truly outstanding. Not only do they read the hundreds of pages and financial information submitted each year, but they also participate in program audits, site visits, and more. They truly are experts next door, and I'm so grateful for their dedication and service without which this program wouldn't be possible. It's now my pleasure to turn this presentation over to Susan Rosenbloom, Ward Three, Nicole Ferriolo, Ward One, who serve on the Grants Review Committee. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me now? Everyone can hear me? Good evening. My name is Susan Rosenbloom, and I've lived in Tacoma Park since nineteen ninety-five, where I am a resident of Ward Three. I joined the Grants Review Committee in twenty nineteen. First, let me say thank you to the council for retaining funding to the Grants Program at eighty thousand dollars, the level from last year. This has enabled us to continue funding for well-performing grantees from prior years and to include new programs. Second, I would like to briefly introduce myself, since I'm a relatively new member of the committee. I retired from the United States Department of Labor three years ago after seventeen years as a program analyst, where I worked in the Employment and Training Administration and the Office of Inspector General, the Office of Audit. At Labor, I served as a federal project officer and audited workforce development grants. Prior to federal service, I worked with community-based nonprofits as coordinator of the National League of Cities Workforce Development for Poverty Reduction Project and as a manager of a mini-grants program sponsored by the Washington-based Association of Community-Based Education. In Chicago, where I live before relocating to the DC area, I served as an evaluator of City of Chicago Job Training Programs for youth and dislocated workers. I founded and led a citywide nonprofit that coordinated joint labor management workplace education programs and served as a volunteer as a board member for two community-based organizations. These experiences allowed me to participate in the grant-making process, both as a funder, recipient, and evaluator. I decided to volunteer for the Grants Review Committee because I respect the key role that nonprofit organizations play in giving residents of diverse backgrounds a voice in shaping the future of their communities. This past year, as a committee member, I conducted a few site visits to projects sponsored by five of our FY twenty twenty grantees. Councilmember Casey Kostick joined me on a few site visits, and I wish to acknowledge her support for this program. My conversation with participants and staff highlighted the impact of the Grants Program, and I'd like to just share a few examples. At one program involving a diverse group of seniors that takes place at the Residence Building, several people came up to me and said that the interactive workshops led them to, quote, "become friends with neighbors down the hall." Folks they said hi to for years but never really talked to. Workshop facilitators made a point of often pairing participants with different backgrounds together to promote cross-cultural learning. When I asked a middle school student why he comes to one grantees' after-school program where the participants are doing weekly science projects with guidance from local college and university science professors, the student said, quote, "It's more hands-on than just sitting behind a desk in a science class, and it helps me learn more." That day, I had the opportunity to observe a group of twelve students, both young men and young women, make LED batteries and small motors. During this coming year, committee members will continue doing audits or site visits via Zoom and other platforms as grantees conduct their programs virtually. By scheduling these visits, we hope to better understand the benefits and the challenges of virtual learning and invite you to join us if you can. I would now like to turn the presentation over to Nicole, our newest committee member.
Thank you, Susan. And I want to echo Susan's appreciation of the council for retaining funding for the Quality of Life Grants Program at the same level as last year. Given the current circumstances in twenty twenty, the projects funded through this program feel more important than ever. So as the newest member of the Grants Review Committee, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Nicole Kang Ferriolo, and I've lived in Tacoma Park in Ward One since twenty sixteen and have been a member of the Grants Review Committee since late twenty nineteen. I wanted to serve on this committee because I believe that grants like these are an important tool for democracy and civic engagement. They encourage partnerships and resource sharing and grassroots initiatives designed and led by the communities they are intended to serve. And it's also worth noting that I am the mother of two small children, including a six-month-old baby who is our honorary committee member and has been a very active participant in our meetings since he was one month old. All this is to say that I have two very personal reasons for being invested in this city thriving for the long term. Like the other members of the Grants Review Committee, I came to the group with a professional background in nonprofits and grant making. Most of my work over the past decade has focused on grant and fellowship programs related to cultural heritage and public knowledge. I currently work at the Council on Library and Information Resources, or CLIR, where I spent five years administering and overseeing our largest funding initiatives, ranging in size from $10,000 to half a million dollars. These grants to archives, museums, libraries, and other nonprofits have focused on preserving hidden historical, cultural, and scientific materials and making them available to the public. In addition to my experience with these larger grants, I've managed smaller fellowship programs, both at CLIR and at my previous employer Columbia University in New York, which supported students' projects ranging in size from $1,000 to $25,000. I also have experience as a grant applicant and over the past ten years have helped my employer organizations bring in nearly $30 million in grant funding across programs. So I have experience with the nuts and bolts of the grant-making process, like issuing calls for proposals, assembling review panels, moderating discussions, and handling post-award oversight. But I've also been the lead on grant policy development and have worked on designing and building new funding programs from the ground up. Central to my work has been a commitment to racial equity, and I've worked closely over the years with expert advisors from diverse backgrounds in my field to make the programs I'm involved with more equitable. I've learned so much from my organization's grant reviewers and have tried to pay it forward by volunteering as a reviewer for national funding programs in my field and now also for the City of Tacoma Park. As a new member of the Tacoma Park Grant Survey Committee, I've been impressed with the council's and the committee's formal dedication to racial equity and to supporting low and moderate income families. I'll speak in greater detail later in this presentation about how racial equity has informed the Grants Review Committee's decision-making, but right now I'd like to provide a broader overview of our review process. So reviewers for the Quality of Life Program are provided with all the eligible applications submitted to the program using our online portal. Committee members are then given time to thoroughly read all of the applications in full and offer quantitative scores based on nine predetermined questions on a one-through-five-point scale. These scores are then averaged across all applicants and totaled to create ranked lists of proposals based on their combined scores and average scores. Following this quantitative review, committee members come together for the qualitative review stage. Using the scores as a starting point, we'll meet as a group to discuss the applications. Because committee members bring different experiences and expertise, one reviewer may notice a strength or a weakness that may not be apparent to others in the group. This also makes sure that the group is on the same page when thinking about priorities. This two-tiered approach helps the committee make funding recommendations based on the program requirements, council priorities, and our knowledge of the community to meet the needs of the people in our city. I'll now turn to Susan, who will tell you about the effect of COVID nineteen on our review and deliberation process this year.
Thank you, Nikki. We've certainly heard a lot tonight from the council about the impact of COVID nineteen on Tacoma Park. And I want to share with you how the Grants Review Committee looked at our proposals through the lens of that impact. The FY twenty one Community Grants Application closed on March twelfth, just days before the lockdown due to COVID nineteen. For that reason, none of the proposals submitted for consideration by the committee addressed the COVID nineteen health crisis. Both city staff and the committee immediately saw the impact the pandemic would have on prospective grantees and participants. All public facilities, including schools and Tacoma Park Community Center Recreation Center, were closed for the unforeseeable future. And mandates for social distancing prevented community events and group activities essential to the Community Grants Program. Recognizing these challenges, committee members agreed to revise our timetable for issuing funding recommendations to council. We wanted to get it right. For us, that meant ensuring that grantees could both deliver programs in a virtual environment and ensure they would be inclusive, aware of the digital divide that persists. On March twenty-fifth, Jennifer Hale, the city's Grants Coordinator, contacted all applicants to invite them to provide an optional COVID nineteen update. On May twenty-first, the Grants Review Committee met to consider funding recommendations after completing all individual review work and evaluating the applications and required documentation. At the May twenty-first meeting, we selected programs that we determined would be viable in a mostly virtual environment. On May twenty-fifth, the Grants Coordinator sent the selected applicants a supplemental application form to solicit additional up-to-date information about their COVID nineteen response. Specifically, we asked for information in order to answer the following questions. What is the organization's plan to ensure the safety of all residents who participate in the programs? If selected for funding, is the organization capable of delivering programming in a virtual environment? Will the organization be technologically prepared to continue programming online for as long as needed to ensure public safety? What technology barriers might participants and other beneficiaries face in order to participate virtually? What is the organization's plan to address any access barriers that might arise? After we reviewed the COVID nineteen information provided by the selected applicants, the committee chose ten programs to recommend for funding. And we are confident that the programs we recommend to you this evening for FY twenty one funding, one, meet all program requirements; two, thoughtfully address the COVID nineteen health crisis and prioritize public health and safety; three, are well-positioned to be successful in a virtual environment; and finally, are responsive to the needs of low and moderate income residents, people of color, and provide meaningful opportunities for residents. There is more information on how the recommended grantees plan to deliver their programs virtually in the individual program descriptions that you will find in the document I think you were provided, FY twenty twenty one Community Grants Funding Recommendation Summary Report. Now Nicole will talk about the committee's consideration of racial equity in our funding recommendations.
Thank you, Susan. So as you know, the Grants Review Committee has embraced the city's resolution committing us to systematically and deliberately applying a racial equity lens in our decision-making. This past year, the committee identified a member to serve as the lead in this area. This member completed the city-funded What's My Bias? training and presented to the GRC on race equity and decision-making. We continued our practice from last year of providing each applicant with a link to the mayor's statement on race equity and the council priorities and asked them to specifically address race equity in the proposed project as part of our new online application. This year, in acknowledgement of the need for workforce development among residents, the committee encouraged all grant applicants to highlight in their proposals any elements of their arts and sciences programs that also promote job readiness for low and moderate income Tacoma Park residents, many of whom are people of color. While not a requirement for funding, gathering this information allowed the GRC to see the potential impact of the proposed programs in a new light. Of the programs recommended for funding this year, two of these programs have prominent workforce development features, and three other programs cultivate STEM skills and training for youth that can lead to better employment opportunities in the future. Race equity was at the center of our decision-making this year, and the resulting slate of grantee recommendations reflects the council's race equity priorities and the needs of residents. Thus, the Grants Review Committee is committed, thus the Grants Review Committee is confident that by adopting our funding recommendations, the council will improve access to STEAM opportunities for people of color, including Black and Latinx communities and immigrants and refugees. Susan and I will now share with you the summaries of the programs the Grants Review Committee is recommending for funding in FY twenty one.
Thank you. Thank you, Nicole. I will now share a brief description of five of these ten organizations recommended for funding. All these organizations are prepared to adapt their programming to be fully virtual, and your packet and the report provides detailed descriptions of the programs. Carpe DM Arts. We are recommending $8,000 for the Healthy Families, Healthy Communities Project Three. Carpe DM Arts will deliver and support a creative arts program to residents at Essex House, Parkview, and Mapleview Apartments, focused on cross-cultural connection and cultural exchange. This program builds upon previous city-funded work to deepen and strengthen connections, mutual support, and school and community engagement. Examples of the activities include a parent's support group, healthy eating, and a strong girls workshop. A planned community mural will be developed via sharing platforms through digital community gatherings. And Carpe DM will provide materials digitally or with safe packing and delivery practices. The second recommended grantee is Community Bridges. And we are recommending $5,000 for the Community Bridges Girls Program. This program will provide 35 weeks of programming and mentorship. To support academic excellence, positive leadership, personal health, and team building. This includes opportunities to participate in the Community Bridges College and Career Planning Program. With workshops and counseling on how to navigate financial aid and prepare for job interviews. And this is one of the examples of how the grantees are incorporating workforce development into their projects. Due to COVID-19, activities normally held at school will now be delivered online. This organization is already doing virtual programming. The Create Arts Center, we are recommending $8,000 for Smart Kids Program at Tacoma Park Elementary School. For the past two years with city funding through the Community Grants Program. Smart Kids has provided a safe, inclusive after school space. Individualized interventions and specialized art education programming to students that need it most. Create Arts is prepared to continue offering programming online as much as needed. The next project is from Cyber Ninjas Global. $7,500 for Cyber Ninjas STEAM Summer Program. Cyber Ninjas Global will provide a STEAM summer camp experience for underrepresented low and moderate income Tacoma Park students. Teaching students of all levels to build their own web browser, 3D art, 2D animation. Special effects videos, video games, and more. This organization helps to demystify the skills necessary for entering the tech world. And strives to close the digital divide by focusing on underrepresented youth. And I'd like to point out that Cyber Ninjas is a first time applicant and grantee. The fifth program I will talk about is the Dance Exchange. And we are recommending $7,000 for Dance Exchange Creative Aging and Intergenerational Exchange Programming. In this program's second year, the Creative Aging Project will continue building. An intergenerational community of care through ongoing movement workshops and their Creative Aging Advisory Committee. This virtual program will culminate in a Creative Aging Festival. That celebrates and surfaces best practices from creative aging work. Dance Exchange received a national endowment for the Arts Grant. Which they will use to support the second year of Creative Aging Program. And now Nicole will tell you about the other five organizations recommended for funding.
Thank you. So the list also includes Docs in Progress for $7,500 for Documentary Dialogs Tacoma. Documentary Dialogs Tacoma is a multi-year program that uses video as a vehicle for reflection, self-expression, and empowerment. By engaging Tacoma Park residents through hands-on video production activities and film screening. It also includes Ethiopian Community Center Inc., $10,000 for bilingual career and service navigator program. The Career and Service Navigator Program will increase skills and employment outcomes for low skilled and low income Tacoma Park residents. With limited English proficiency to equip African immigrant communities in the Washington metropolitan area. With the language tools and resources they need to become economically self-sufficient and civically engaged citizens. Gandhi Brigade Youth Media, $7,000 for the Promoters Program. The Promoters Program creates collaborative media learning labs where young people identify community issues, build confidence to speak up, and use media skills to take action. Starting this summer, all programs will have Spanish bilingual teachers and teaching assistants. The list also includes Historic Tacoma Inc., $10,000 for stories from Tacoma Park's African American community. Last year, with support of the Community Grants Program. Historic Tacoma began documenting the lives of those who came from the South beginning in the 1920s. And built a close and vibrant African American community in the face of racial discrimination and limited economic resources during segregation and the decades that followed. In FY21, Historic Tacoma will create short thematic films edited from the interviews gathered last year. And will develop curricula that can be accessed online and used by teachers in virtual classrooms. The project will also result in a book of edited oral histories. And finally, the list includes Upwardly Global. $10,000 for building a vibrant Tacoma Park through immigrant workforce integration. Uplow will help vulnerable immigrants, refugees, and asylums in Tacoma Park. Transition from unemployment and underemployment to thriving wage professional roles that pave the way towards self-sufficiency and integration. This program will establish an applicant pipeline for Tacoma Park-based immigrant job seekers. Residents will gain access to Uplow's robust pool of volunteer professionals, reskilling slash upskilling training opportunities, and employer partners. Supporting the attainment of gainful employment in competitive 21st century roles.
Thank you so much Nikki and Susan for that presentation and for the Grants Review Committee members who joined. Also on this Zoom. We want to open up this, because the presentation has concluded and we want to open it up to questions now. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for that wonderful presentation and I'll just remind my colleagues as well as members of the public who are watching that the Grants Review Committee's full report is available on our city website. So you can take a look at it there. And I just want to say thank you again for this wonderful presentation and all your hard work this year. I know it was difficult year for all of us, especially given the timing of when the grants came in. Let's see, I will turn it over to Councilmember Siemens first.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would just like to associate the mayor's comments. They, you know, this is an impressive presentation, impressive because of the content. I thank you so much for the work that you put into this during these difficult times. The, I'm just flabbergasted with the, with the kind of increase in methodology that you've used to do this grant selections this year. It's another step forward in kind of professionalizing our approach. It really shows. I haven't had time to review all of these recommendations. I look forward to looking at them in more detail, but again, I just want to thank you for your effort in this.
Terrific. Councilmember Smith, excuse me.
I just want to thank everyone for their hard work on this. Have you guys thought about bringing on a third party, whether it's through a local university or some of the universities? Like in Philadelphia or the Boston area to act as a program evaluator? So that we can, as a council, understand if the goals that we have for the program are actually being met? And if there are any things that the program is trying to do. Through like a logic, building a logic model that we could be supportive. Because it's not something that's, you know, obvious in their mission statement, but it might be something that they're talking about privately within the leadership of the organization. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith, I'll try to answer that and then maybe turn it over to Jen. As I think Nikki pointed out in her presentation, one of those steps forward. Was for the first time asking the applicants. What they considered their outputs to be, their outcomes to be. And as Jennifer said earlier, we attended the nonprofit Montgomery Workshop on metrics. And we're hoping that working with the grantees in the coming years, seeing the kind of information that they're going to put forth. Will help us to understand better how we might approach the evaluation. I think your point is a good suggestion. Of course, you know, we would have to figure out how to look at the resources for that, what would be involved. But I think you make some good points on that, on making that recommendation. And I, as someone who comes from a background in program evaluation, I, I think that would be very helpful for the council and for the community. And for the people involved themselves to identify. What are the strategies that they're using to achieve these outcomes, which was another question that we specifically asked the applicants this year. Jen, do you want to comment on that?
And thank you, Councilmember Smith, for that question. You know, one of the things that we attempted to do in the FY21 application is start asking these questions right away. Not to wait until some final report. And so all of the applicants, you know, as has been mentioned, were asked to show essentially a logic model, or at least the first phase of it. But their outcomes, what their anticipated outcomes are using change words. And what the strategies and tools that they will deploy to achieve those outcomes. And now as we, as the, as the programs have been selected for funding recommendations. Those programs that are funded, they're going to go through a city contracting process. Where we're going to be able to hone in even more closely on what those outcomes are going to be. And then we're going to be able to trace that all the way through all of the reporting. So that throughout the entire grant program, from beginning to end, grantees are really monitoring and giving us that feedback. On their intended outcomes from the very beginning. And I do think that this is a really a big improvement.
And I have another question. What about the, the leadership in the board of directors of these organizations? How do they match up or align with our racial equity policy?
Um, wow. Thank you, Councilmember, for that question. That is actually something that came up in our review committee meeting. We did not come into the meeting with a set policy about that, but that is something that we are hoping to consider for the future. And something that was unofficially taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Can I ask if we could maybe stop sharing the screen? Because then that way we can see more people. I think, yeah, that's awesome. Thank you. Terrific. Let's see who we have to. Councilwoman Cersei.
Hello. Thank you so much for this wonderful presentation. It's really exciting. The various projects that are being proposed. But also the approach that you all took to select them, I think is, is so spot on. I definitely agree with Councilmember Smith that I think the first step, which you all rightly picked out. Is to enable awardees to know, or the grantees to know that they are going to be expected to assess their respective projects and that they are expected to have those outcome measures and get them baked in at the start. And I think that that's going to be something that's going to be really important, especially if we find some really strong evidence that would support maybe ramping up or continuing certain types of projects in future years. One of the things that we, you know, that the committee may want to also think about are just overall goals of the program and how things that may be, for example, if one of the goals for this funding cycle is to really make sure that we're seeing across the board. Certain types of applicants. Goals in terms, in terms of diversity, for example. And whether or not that might mean if we see same types of applicants. Are we, do we need to change our outreach strategies? So I just kind of want to encourage you all to kind of think about maybe for the next cycle, whether or not there are certain administrative targets that you all may want to set for yourselves. In order to ensure that we're kind of getting the right folks. And it sounds like you all already have established some criteria that's pretty strong in terms of identifying the right, the right candidates. But that's just another take on what Councilmember Smith brought up. Another thing that I think is going to be really important, I love that you all are making people just from the start deal with virtual programming. I know that that is, that has been a problem for not, not just awardees or grantees in the city of Tacoma Park making that transition this year, but just across the board. With having to transition into a COVID world. Have you all thought about any aspects of timing of deliverables for your respective awardees in terms of, let's say we go into another wave. Are we prepared, if necessary, to do any kinds of like extensions? Were we asking the grantees to kind of work under some abbreviated scheduling? I was just wondering, you know, if we have some flexibility. Should awardees plan to do things virtually, of course, but should something else? You know, we're living in the land of unexpected things happening every day. Should something else happen? Are we allowing some flexibility in their schedules in terms of their deliverables to allow for, for that level of flexibility? I think the fact that we're going virtual should, should address a lot of that. And that may not be as big of a concern. I was just wondering if you all gave any thought to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Cersei. I, you know, as we enter into the contracting phase, that's really going to be front and center. You know, there, there has to be some flexibility built into the contracts. There always is, even in a perfectly normal year. Things happen. So, you know, we anticipate that there will always be flexibility in our contracting. And the hope is, as you rightly pointed out, the hope is that by selecting programs that can be virtual for the duration. We should hopefully avoid some of those issues. But then we do have to be, you know, aware that there needs to be redundancies on the staffing side for all of these nonprofits so that at no point is there any interruption of services. Because, you know, we are in a pandemic and that's a reality right now. So I think that's a really good point that you bring up.
Again, thank you so much. And this was an amazing presentation. I enjoyed reading the report and man, this is an awesome team. So I just want to again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next we have Councilwoman DeBala.
Yes, thanks. This is, this is really awesome. I'm very impressed with the professionalism. With the thoroughness and, and with the enthusiasm that you're bringing to this. I think these are great picks. And all I really want, and I love the way that you dealt with the COVID questions. That of course arise when you're trying to deliver programming in an uncertain time. And I very much appreciate your focus both in the application and in the delivery on equity issues. My only question is how soon can some of these programs start? That actually is a serious question. I did not mean that rhetorically.
Yeah, some of these programs are slated, you know, when they applied before COVID was a thing. Some of them were slated to start July 1. There's obviously going to need to be flexibility on that. I think it's, it's might be entirely possible. But I don't think it's likely that every program that thought that they would begin in the next few weeks will be able to do it. And we're going to have to be flexible as we administer these programs.
So programs that are for summer may still be for this summer.
Yeah, that's the hope.
Okay, thank you.
If I, this is Susan. If I could just share this piece. When we reviewed the applications, the supplemental applications. One of the questions I believe was, are you doing any virtual programming now? So we did get some information and several of the recommended grants. So we did get some information and several of the recommended grantees said they were already doing online programming. Or in, in another example, I recall, one of the applicants said that they were in the process of doing a survey and assessment of the area of the community they were going to be working with to find out what was needed and, you know, did people already have laptops? Did they need iPhones, you know? So they, it sounds like all of these grantees that we are recommending were being somewhat proactive.
Great, thank you.
Great. Next, Councilmember Siemens, is that a hand from prior comment? Or do you have another question?
I did not take my hand down, sorry.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you to the committee members for all the information. A few questions. One of the concerns that I had, just given that we're in the COVID era, is wanting the grants to not only be responsive to the challenges, and I think you all have done a good job of doing that, but doing what we can to, if the grants are not directly related to COVID-19, at least have some sense for whether the community that would benefit, or the communities that would benefit from the grants might tend to be those that are more disproportionately affected in certain ways economically and in other ways by the pandemic. And I know it's impossible to sort of say that at this stage when the programs that were funding haven't started yet. But does anyone have a sense for the degree to which that could be true?
Well, I, I, I think that the, when we went back to look at the supplemental information, we looked into that criteria and, and wanted to make sure that, if I understand your question, that the grants would be serving people in those communities that were going to be most impacted by COVID. And I, I think that, and that ties into the racial equity lens that we used in making our final selection.
So your, an assessment was made, or the assessment that was made took that point into account?
Yes.
It may be worth noting, actually, that in our COVID supplemental form, we actually had a specific question talking about the intersection between COVID and race equity and low and moderate income residents at Tacoma Park, understanding that COVID affects different residents differently.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
The other thing, sorry, the other thing that's worth noting in regards to this is that we also had a question that allowed applicants to describe other activities that they were doing that may be relevant to the COVID situation because they designed their projects and applied for these projects before COVID. So it could be that there are other things that they're already working on that are relevant in terms of reaching the right communities and helping them to the best of their abilities.
You mean activities that aren't specifically funded by the city through this grant as well?
Correct, but understanding kind of the breadth of what these organizations are taking on.
So you mentioned that some reports were eliminated. Were there extraneous things that we've been previously kind of asking grantees to do? I'm not sure who should feel that.
Oh, yeah, so in, in FY20, we took a good look at the reporting requirements, which were sort of one size fits all. And we had been asking for what ended up being five reports. And for some of these programs, it didn't make a lot of sense because some of them might run for a month and be for $5,000. And some might run for a year and be for $10,000. And so we wanted to right-size the reporting. And what that ended up doing was me us down to two, two progress reports and a final report. And the, and there are more robust reporting requirements within those reports. So it, it didn't lessen the amount of information we were tracking, just the burden on the, on the grantee.
And then just two other things. And I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to look through all the material in advance, but does this show or summarize the applicants that were not funded? Just so we can get a sense for that?
No, this, this report summarizes the applicants that are being recommended for funding.
Okay, because I think in the past, we've also, my colleagues maybe can correct me, but I thought we've had that too, just to sort of assess. And not that we want to call attention to them, because I'm sure there are others that were.
Yeah, we can of course provide that.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to reiterate my great thanks to all of you for your hard work on this, to Ms. Wiggins and Ms. Hale, and to the committee members who clearly have spent a substantial amount of time and effort working on this and taking this very seriously. I also wanted to reiterate my thanks to Ms. Rosenbloom for inviting me to take part in some of the site visits and to be able to see some of these grant, grantees in action. It was really a great opportunity and I appreciate the invites and hope to do so more in the future. I actually will need to abstain from voting on this because I have a, a relationship through the nonprofit that I work with, with one of the applicants. But I, I thank you very much for your, your work on this and, and very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I put in chat and I will email a couple of other resources that I, I found helpful in thinking about racial equity and grant making. Since you all have, you know, dove into it this year, it would be great to kind of see what you do next year. And there are lots of tools out there. And so I just shared two of them. They may be familiar to you all already. But I just thank you so much for, what I see is really kind of like a leap forward for this committee. So thanks for all the work. And the nice thing is that I know I'm familiar with some of the groups here, particularly Carpe Diem and the amazing work they have been doing, Essex House and with Denise Jones, terrific work. And I'm glad we're going to continue to fund that. And Gandhi Brigade and seeing new organizations such as Community Bridges, which is an organization that I've actually gotten to know more of in the last year and participated in some of their discussion and mentoring of young women. And I, Community Bridges is actually located in Silver Spring, but they work at Blair and work with many young women in our community. And so it was really great to get to know them better and some of the young women who are in their program here in Tacoma Park. So I'm so glad that we're going to be able to fund them this year and create a stronger bond with them. So I just want to reiterate again our great thanks to this committee and all your work that you've done. You've really, I think, set the bar high. So thank you so much. And, and you know, as my grandmother used to say when I was young, good work is always rewarded by more work. And so I'm looking forward to continuing working with all of you and all of these grantees. And I hope to, you know, especially since we're in more of a virtual world, that one of the things you started last year was inviting us to see the grantees in action. And I'm looking forward to doing more of that this year. So, thank you. Does the committee have any questions for us or anything else?
Not at this time, not for me.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hale. And we look forward to voting on this item next week. So have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, let's see, what is next up? We have, next on our agenda is a recap of the 2020 legislative session and discussion of legislative priorities moving forward. And with us, we have our lobbyist who represents the city in Annapolis. Let's see, is Alice, I think I saw Alice with us before. Yes, here you are. And so sum up the legislative session of 2020 for us.
Good evening. So nice to see all of you, although very remotely. And I have to say, this is the first time I've had the opportunity to present in this type of a situation. So it feels a little strange. But yeah, the 2020 legislative session, I have really, I have two presentations tonight. So first, I have an abbreviated presentation about the legislative session, in part because the session itself was abbreviated and condensed, but also because I feel like the sort of end of session report is less about what was passed and probably more about kind of what happened and the questions that you all probably have of, you know, why a lot of things didn't happen. And so I figure I'll do a, I'll make that presentation and we'll have a Q and A on that part. And then following that, I have a, just a brief presentation to sort of outline what the current discussion is on police accountability in Maryland, since that is an extremely important topic right now. And there are so many issues that are, that are happening. See how I can be of assistance to you all in trying to provide some information and potential clarity to some of those conversations. So with that, thank you again. I thoroughly enjoy representing the city in Annapolis. It is quite an honor and I appreciate, I really appreciate having the, maintaining my connections to Tacoma Park this way. And this year started out, you know, with lots of hope and we had a great agenda outlined for the city. And the General Assembly was able to meet for 71 days before adjourning on March 18. They usually meet for 90 days. What I want to mention is important about the March 18 deadline or adjournment is they were able to meet just long enough to get past the crossover deadline, which is when bills move from one chamber to another. But that is also one of the reasons that a lot of legislation was not voted on in another chamber. So there were a lot of situations where a bill may have passed on the House or the Senate side, but it didn't receive a vote from the other committee. And that's because the crossover date happened just really a week before they adjourned. And so the other chamber didn't receive those bills until we were already really in the midst of the COVID crisis. And the focus at that point in time was on making sure that the General Assembly fulfilled its constitutional responsibilities to pass the budget. And the committees were also really focused on making sure that they were moving what the types of financial and public health-related legislation that they could, trying to anticipate what they could do ahead of the pandemic to at least soften some of the impacts and to make sure that all of the public health resources that they could make available were made available. So the timing is part of why we don't, we see a lot of bills that were doing really well and they got through one side and then they, they weren't voted on on the other. I don't interpret that to be anything about the merit of that legislation and it more just has to do with the timing and with the public health crisis looming. So with that, to the city's legislative priorities, we tracked over 175 bills this year with 60 bills that we were really actively monitoring on and testified on over a dozen bills on behalf of the city. We had a presentation leading up to session where we talked about the priorities for the city this session. One of those priorities being community choice aggregation. This is HB 561 and SB 315. This bill did pass the House, but I would put it in a category of legislation that was, probably would have passed for the session, but did not have enough time on the Senate side for that committee to take it off. Another issue that was brought up that has been a big focus been, I completely forgot that I have a presentation for you. Let me share my screen with you. I got so caught up in my normal presentation. Let's see, sorry about that. Look at that. And then, there we go. There. So much easier than this one. And so with the community choice aggregation legislation I just mentioned, we also talked about municipal revenues and always looking for opportunities to find a way to increase revenues for the cities, particularly beyond property taxes. And one of the focuses this session was trying to get the full restoration of the highway user revenues. That bill did not receive a vote in either committee. But I will say that overall, there was a general push to not have a lot of fee or tax-related type bills and a change really in the makeup of how the budget is even structured. So when we look at the state budget, it didn't really increase any spending over fiscal 2020. The budget only went up by about 1%. And I think this is again, the result of a lot of the decisions that are being made by the budget committees were happening right at the same time that they were trying to figure out when they needed to adjourn with the pandemic and trying to get a budget through as quickly as possible. So this played out on the revenues issue in a number of ways. There were a couple of bills that did pass that ended up being vetoed by the governor. One of them included a 6% sales tax that would have applied to digital downloads, which is like if you purchase a book for your Kindle, that the sales tax would still apply to that. That was vetoed by the governor along with sales tax for increasing the tax on cigarettes and applying it to vaping. So with that, HB 1628, I think, was the biggest revenue generator that was really discussed, that would have expanded the state sales tax to include more services. This is something just to, I'm highlighting because this comes up routinely. Every couple of years, this conversation happens. And it's because our state sales tax applies to only a handful of services. And so often, when the state tries to find ways of raising revenue, it comes back to this conversation about which services should be taxed and which shouldn't be taxed. And every time it comes up, it is extremely controversial. There was a lot of opposition to it. And the General Assembly takes a position of saying, we need to really study this and have a better understanding of what services make sense to tax. And it doesn't seem clear if that conversation has really ever happened, if that study has really ever happened, because then when the legislation comes back up, they sort of run into the same roadblock of picking and choosing services and running into problems with opposition. But I don't think this issue is going anywhere. So it's something to just sort of keep on the radar for what type of position the city wants to take in the future about raising or extending the sales tax to, to certain services. Because I, I think at some point, they're, they're going to put something through. Also, its significance to the city, the city has long advocated for more affordable housing and for tenant issues in the General Assembly. Again, we have the Stable Homes Act, which was previously been called Just Cause Evictions. And that bill was passed by the House delegation again this year, as it was passed last year. It was not brought up for a vote in the House Environment and Transportation Committee. In terms of this bill, because it is a local bill, it has to pass the House, the Montgomery County delegation, and then it has to pass the House. and then it has to pass the House Standing Committee before the Senate can take it up. So the Senate has never had an opportunity to vote on this legislation. And in order for it to move forward, it does need to receive a vote and be brought up for a vote and be passed by the House Environment and Transportation Committee. Another bill also sponsored by Delegate Wilkins from District 20 as Stable Homes is a tax credit for multifamily housing to help them meet energy and water efficiency goals. That bill was also not brought up for a vote. One bill that did make it through is the statewide source of income legislation, which is already the law in Montgomery County. But I wanted to highlight this because it is significant. The city did support this legislation, sort of in supporting the idea that people should not be discriminated upon because of their source of income when they apply for rental housing. It is legislation that has been around for at least a decade and has always struggled to pass. Whether it is typically, it had been in the Senate Judicial Proceedings Committee. This bill was sponsored by Senator Smith, who's now chairman of that committee. And I think passage of this legislation is really, I'm very hopeful that it is indicative of a change that we are going to start to see where people are taking tenant issues more seriously. And to that end, I will say there has been a briefing in Senate Judicial Proceedings. Senator Smith had a briefing on housing issues related to the COVID pandemic. He had a briefing very early on to try and address some of the issues and get a better understanding of how the courts were going to be handling the evictions process. The House Environment and Transportation Committee was supposed to have a briefing this week, but it was canceled, so we are hoping that it gets rescheduled soon. And our District 20 leaders, particularly Delegate Wilkins, have been pushing very, very hard to get a moratorium statewide on eviction proceedings. And there's a lot of discussion that is going on about the concern over evictions proceeding forward in light of the pandemic, in light of issues such as people who have applied for unemployment and are still waiting weeks and weeks and haven't received all of their unemployment funds. And they have rent due and they now face the possibility of eviction when all of these other services that the, that the state was supposed to be providing have not kicked in to help support them. So that's combining COVID and housing in a big picture. But this is one of the big issues that is ongoing throughout the COVID crisis right now. Climate change is always an issue that the, the city has been leading on advocacy as well as environmental issues generally. And I want to say that the city did support a number of bills that were looking at renewable energy, greenhouse gas reductions and other environmental issues. And this is an issue that really did not receive a lot of attention this session. I think in part because of the shortened session, one of the challenges that we had was that the Senate Education, Health and Environmental Affairs Committee was the lead committee that was in charge of the Blueprint for Education legislation. And that legislation took up a significant amount of time and there was a lot of effort put in as the pandemic was sort of closing in on the session. There was a lot of attention given to making sure that the blueprint was passed. And that took up a significant amount of committee time, particularly on the Senate side where environmental issues and education issues are heard in the same committee. On the House side, that's not the case. It's the Environment and Transportation Committee and they didn't have any major issues that they were trying to get through at the end of session. So I think we saw a number of bills again that did pass in the House that came over to the Senate and just were not taken up again because of time. I don't think it was necessarily because of the merit, but I, I think the environmental legislation really got caught up at the shortened session. So unfortunately, we, I don't have any real wins that I can point to there, the session. On the Purple Line, we did have some really positive movement here. I, I want to highlight HB 540 and SB 645 sponsored by Senator Smith and Delegate Wilkins. And I want to also highlight the role that the city played in this legislation, which had been introduced previously in 2019 and we did not see a lot of traction with it. But this year came back and we had amazing hearings on these bills. Great testimony that came from local businesses. And it was really powerful and it was received really well and was, I just, I think, very meaningful advocacy. And from that, the House bill did pass in time to make it over to the Senate. But the Senate was running out of time to get the bill through the full process. But our District 20 leaders really were able to step up and make sure that the funding, the grant program and the actual money that we were trying to, to pass, the $2 million was set aside in the budget, even though the legislation didn't make it through. So while we don't have the specifics of how the grant program has to operate, that'll be left up to the agency. The money is there and that's, that's the critical, most important part. And so that was really, I think, the result, the fact that that got in at the last minute with all of the other pressing issues that were going on, I think is in part based on the very powerful testimony that demonstrated a clear need to address this issue and like real leadership from, from Senator Smith and Delegate Wilkins to make the funding happen. And then quickly, I want to touch on the budget. So normally, this is where I would give a presentation about how much money is in the budget, how it's being allocated, various programs that Montgomery County got funding for. I don't know that there's a whole lot of point in going through that because the budget and what the budget looks like as we go through fiscal 2021 is really unknown. Because of the impacts, the fiscal impacts of COVID-19, this is probably the biggest question right now that is facing the state in terms of is what is the budget going to look like? We went into the session and we went, we went into the 2021 fiscal year with the, with actually better numbers than we thought that we would. They had, there had been, you know, predictions that we were going to need discussing, you know, budget shortfalls, and then we ended up with actually a small surplus, which I, I think was probably a good position to be in going into now the economic situation that we're in. So the fiscal 2021 budget was passed as required in the state constitution. But as of right now, the budget forecasts have estimated that the pandemic will have an economic impact of a $925 million economic loss to the state. There were reports that the loss was going to be higher. Those numbers were adjusted that by the end of this month and the end of the 2020 fiscal year, that that would be a total economic loss. That does not factor in what type of, how much we, you know, the federal government is going to be reimbursing the state and other types of stimulus money. And that's not to say that that's the impact directly on the state's budget, but that's the economic forecast that the budget is currently operating in. In response, the Board of Public, the Governor and the Board of Public Works passed budget reductions to the fiscal 2020 budget prior to the end of this fiscal year of $121 million. Most of those reductions are, you know, positions that haven't been filled and other types of cost-saving measures that they could do without significantly reducing any kind of real programming money in state services. At this point in time, we are waiting for new figures to, to come out. We anticipate there may be an announcement on what the current economic, like economic predictions are. And there might be an announcement about further cuts, initial cuts to the 2021 fiscal year budget potentially as soon as next week. And that's just sort of speculating on what committees have posted in their hearing schedule. So that's, that's sort of what we're thinking might be happening. But it's important for everyone to understand that the Governor has the authority to cut the, the state budget up to 25%. And he can make suggestions for cuts and the Board of Public Works can approve those cuts independent of the General Assembly. Once the budget cuts reach 25% or greater, the General Assembly will have to be called in for a special session. And at that point in time, they will be required to write a new budget and, and pass a new budget. So that also leads into the conversation about the special session. At the end of the shortened session, there was an indication from leadership that there would be a special session to address a number of those bills that didn't make it through at the end or take up other issues related to the pandemic. I think that the pandemic has lasted much longer than it was anticipated. Everyone sort of thought, once we were in May, we'd be able to convene again and take up those issues. Clearly not the case. At this point in time, there's no indication that there will be a special session. And I will add that the Governor's veto of a couple dozen bills would now be at the top of the list of a special session because the legislature would be required to take up veto overrides the next time that they meet. And so that would be at a special session. They would have to do veto overrides. And if a special session was being called for a budget, you know, then those would be the primary issues. I don't see much else coming up in a special session if there were to be one. But at this point in time, I don't think that the Governor would be calling a special session anytime soon or that leadership will be requesting one. What we are seeing instead are a lot of briefings. And so for council, for members of the public, the General Assembly website keeps a calendar and there are a lot of briefings that are going on, on a variety of topics. Much of them are related to the COVID pandemic, but are trying to focus on education in light of COVID. What are the housing issues because of COVID? What are the issues in the judicial system, in the correction systems? So those briefings are happening on a regular basis. Every other Wednesday, there's a briefing or a meeting of leadership on the House and Senate side to sort of talk about what the latest issues are as they relate to COVID. So there are still a lot of activity to tune into and the legislators themselves are quite active compared to the, you know, drop-off of activity that we normally see, certainly in the summertime. There's usually not anything going on, but the legislature is still very much engaged and still taking up as many issues as it can while not being in session. And so that leads us to a little bit of what's going to happen in 2021. Certainly, right now, we are looking at, there are a lot of veto overrides, including the blueprint for education because, and tied to the blueprint, because that bill was vetoed, it basically stalls. It prevents the school construction funding of over $2 billion from moving forward because that bill was tied to the blueprint bill. So, you know, the two major pieces of legislation that we saw on education are both on hold until there's a veto override. Police accountability, as we all know, is a major issue. I expect that that's going to take up a significant amount of time this session. I think we will see also some legislation resulting from the pandemic in terms of employees and workers from paid sick leave to issues such as whistleblower protections for employees, you know, who may be in a situation where they don't have appropriate gear to, or they, there's too many people in a facility. We're going to see a lot of issues come up, I think, related to that. Conditions for workers and, you know, our meat processing facilities. There's going to be a lot on that front. And I still anticipate seeing a, a full discussion on adult use of cannabis as being a major issue in 2021. So I'm going to pause here so that we can sort of do questions on the legislative session and then I'll go into the police accountability issues.
Great. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions regarding the 2020 legislative session? See, Councilman Kostick.
Hello. Thank you very much for the presentation. I just have a couple of questions. One is, I was wondering if you have any information about the, the Purple Line contract dispute and the situation there. I know the, some of the legislators wrote a letter requesting a deeper dive into information from the firms bidding on the Beltway project in response to what's happened with the Purple Line. And I'm just curious if you have any thoughts or insights into what's happening with the Purple Line, how we can ensure that that project moves forward? And, and then as well, if there's anything related to the Beltway project?
Yeah. So on the issue of the, you know, you brought up the Beltway project. The, I mentioned that the legislation to allow for local governments to sign off on those types of projects, the expansion of toll roads and such, that also did not receive a vote again this year, same as last year. I think that there's now a lot of questions that are out there about these public-private partnerships and whether or not there's enough accountability for the private side to hold up their end of an agreement and, and how this, how this works when we're talking about having such, some, such huge responsibilities for a project being put on a private company that apparently might have the ability to walk away. I know that there are a lot of questions about the Purple Line and what's going on right now, but I am not aware of any real answers. So I hesitate to speculate right now, but I'm happy to continue to seek those answers. And I think speaking to our District 20 legislators as well, I know Councilman Hucker has been raising a lot of questions. And I, I think at this point, we have a lot more questions than we do answers about what's going on. But I anticipate that this is going to raise more questions as we go forward in 2021 of looking at these P3 projects, which is not something that Maryland has traditionally prioritized and engaged in. So it is a sort of newer approach to transportation that came with the current administration. And so I think now we're seeing a lot of questions and potential issues that are rising out of the decision to address our public transportation infrastructure needs through P3s. So I think there's, there's going to be a lot of conversation going forward.
Thank you. My other question was, just looking forward to the upcoming session. Given the fact that we, we suspect there will likely be COVID still, you know, as a factor to contend with and the potential for closures, what sort of plans are in place to ensure that legislation can move forward? what sort of plans are in place to ensure that legislation can move forward and votes can be taken? And it could be an effective session when when they do go back to session?
So at this point in time, there have not been any public conversations about, I'm assuming that they are having conversations internally in the General Assembly about what does a remote session or a partially remote session look like? We are anticipating that that is a possibility. What I will say is the end of the session was, the last week or so of the session was closed to everyone. And I think it was a moment of really rapid learning for everyone to figure out how to, first of all, for the General Assembly, of how can they be transparent? And how can they utilize technology to allow for that transparency? And there were some bumps in the road, but they did make a real effort to try to make sure that they were still broadcasting all of their committee sessions, including starting broadcasting vote sessions, which is not something that they have traditionally done. But they did start broadcasting those vote sessions. And so you were, and the Senate knew this year in the House, they started having a live video stream of the four proceedings. And that, I mean, I have to say, that was such a game changer already to be able to see the people, be able, I mean, I'm pretty good at putting the voices and knowing who the person is. I can't imagine how much better that was for everyone else to be able to watch a floor, to see the person who's speaking and have, you know, like C-SPAN, it pops up on the bottom and it tells you who they are so that you can put that all together. That was really fantastic. And when things closed down, it was great to have that. The Senate had not yet gotten the technological capabilities to to make that happen. And so what was, what they did was the Senate President just started live streaming through his Facebook account, the a video of the Senate proceedings, which, you know, worked, sort of. But it it was still a window into the process. And so I know that there's a lot of effort that's going into that. We also had this year, for the first time, then the General Assembly went full electronic testimony. So that was new. So they just started doing that where they stopped taking all the paper testimony and everything was electronic. The problem with that is, it was not electronic where we could send it in. Like, we still needed to carry, you know, the flash drive into the committee to give to the staff to take the electronic files. So I'm I'm hopeful that they're able to make some changes without having to do anything too dramatic because they happened to have just made a lot of steps towards a more digital kind of remote technological advancements. So I do think that's a possibility. I I want to say I would have concerns about a fully remote session and how people can still advocate. Because while it is great, I like, I'm, it's great for me to have this job and where I can advocate on behalf of the city, but as far as the general public goes, the general public doesn't have that access. And while this is my job and I have a lot of contacts and I can directly communicate with a legislator because that's my full-time job, the general public doesn't have that kind of of access to those legislators. So I will be concerned if we have to go the route of a fully remote session of how do we really ensure public input? And ensure that the public is able to have its say in a way that kind of counterbalances those of us who are who are paid to be sort of on the inside. So I I think that that would be my my biggest concern in moving to a fully remote session or even limited participation.
Yeah, thank you very much. That makes a lot of sense. I mean, I think for ourselves, we've seen a lot of new opportunities for people to connect with us because we've been virtual, but it's a very different situation. And we don't have the same structure at all. So that absolutely makes sense. And yeah, we'll we'll be looking forward to seeing what happens. And and I'm I'm happy to see more of the shift to the electronic and and to making it more user-friendly. Thank you.
Great. Why don't we move on to the next part of your presentation? And people can ask questions at the end of that as well.
Great. And not to make anything longer, I'll tack on to the end of my comments there that we the, while the committees have been doing a lot of the briefings, they are figuring out ways to have more public input. And as an example, the Senate Finance Committee had, I don't know, an eight to 10-hour, I think, briefing on where they allowed for public input to on unemployment insurance. And and the committee sat through many, many, many hours of people being able to call in like, like you all have been doing. And so I think that they have found some ways of still ensuring public participation. So let me get back here. Let me share again. There we go. So moving on to the issue of police accountability, I want to present just an overview of a small part of the discussions that are going on. Recognizing that this is a huge issue, it also goes well beyond police accountability into systemic racism. And, you know, I think that we have had a number of attempts. I I purposely put reforms in quotes here because in 2016, following the death of Freddie Gray in Baltimore City, there was a large push to have more police accountability in Maryland. And a number of bills were passed that were a reform package. And I think while the intent was from the legislature to truly have reform, in actual, it just did not happen. And one of the reasons I think that we're sort of learning about is that a number of the bills that were passed did not have a, an enforcement mechanism that came with them. So I think this was something that really even the legislature itself right now is learning about. The Speaker, Adrian Jones, she has put together a police accountability police accountability work group through the House Judiciary Committee. It is chaired by the Vice Chair of Judiciary, which is Delegate Vanessa Attaberry. I wanted to note that Delegate David Moon from District 20 is a member of that work group. And I will be making the, my slideshow here available so it can be made public, so people can click on these links. But you can also go to the Maryland General Assembly's website. And the police accountability work group has its own page, which you can find direct from the homepage. And they had their first meeting yesterday. So they had a number of documents that were presented at that meeting. And one that people might find really informative, which I've I've linked to, is a history of all of the police accountability bills that have passed since 2016 and a summary of what those bills do. Also, in that set of documents is a presentation from the Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission, which was established by legislation in 2016. And there are slides in there from the commission on what it is that they're responsible for. And I think one of the things that seemed at least clear to me from the presentation yesterday was in 2016, the legislature established this commission. And the commission was intended to create best practices for police agencies in the state and to develop policies on particular issues and to improve trainings and to have sort of comprehensive trainings on on various subjects. And it seems like what happened with that was, the commission was created. The commission created best practices, but there was no follow-through on whether or not those best practices are implemented anywhere. And even if there was a requirement for local agencies to implement those best practices, there's no enforcement or teeth behind it if they fail to comply. So I think the General Assembly intended in 2016 to sort of create a body that would establish sort of, you know, a commission for better policing practices and that they would be responsible for creating policies for law enforcement agencies across the state. Law enforcement agencies would adopt those policies. They would adopt those trainings and that it would lead to, you know, changes within police forces and greater accountability. But we didn't get past the first step of developing the policies. So that is part of the information that I think everyone is collectively learning right now about why a lot of the reforms in 2016 have not seemed to work. So the work group is going to continue meeting. Their next meeting is going to be July 16th. They intend to have a public hearing on August 6th. It is not clear how that's going to operate yet, but I, all of that information will be forthcoming. And they are going to review policies that can work across the state. They're going to look into issues such as use of force. They are going to have a meeting that is solely focused on talking about the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights. They are also going to be looking into issues such as how the Maryland, the MPIA, which is like FOIA request or Public Information Act. So how does the Public Information Act work in terms of policing and police accountability? Because right now, the MPIA is used as a way to prohibit the release, the public release of body camera footage, records relating to police misconduct cases or even complaints about police. So I know that there's going to be an examination of how the the MPIA interacts with the issue of police accountability and what changes should be necessary. And they're also going to try and develop some best practices and ultimately recommend what legislation they think should be taken up by the House next session. The Senate, right now, has taken action in terms of Senator Smith in District 20, who serves as Chair of Senate Judicial Proceedings. He released a letter listing the reforms that he would like to see pursued next session. And this, again, includes the MPIA reform, as I was just talking about, use of force, including a ban on chokeholds. And I will say that that came up at the work group yesterday. And that according to the Police Training and Standards Commission, that I believe that he was indicating that chokeholds either are not used at all or are not, or are banned. It was not clear, but was a straight, absolutely prohibited ban. But but he did bring that up. There's a lot of, also in use of force, and one of the conversations that keeps coming up is about the duty of other officers to intervene in a situation where an officer is, you know, misusing and putting someone in danger. So that has come up both in the House discussions, it's in Senator Smith's proposal. And as I'll show, it's also one of the issues that comes up with advocates. Police training, both the House and Senator Smith have talked about implicit bias trainings. So implicit bias screenings at the time of hire as well as implicit bias trainings. So those are scenarios, which is figuring out when to shoot, when not to shoot, and how our implicit biases can affect and how an officer is going to handle a situation. There's also discussion about hiring, various evaluations being used at the time of hiring. But beyond that and throughout an officer's employment. So right now, we have certain screenings that are done at the time of hiring, but they are not done ever repeated after that unless there is an incident where there might be an injury or a death. And at that point in time, they might come back and do, perform the evaluations after the fact. But there's no routine, let's say psychiatric type of evaluations that are conducted for law enforcement. Senator Smith also brought up having a special prosecutor. This is an issue that I think is going to be fairly controversial. I I believe that Marilyn Mosby, the State's Attorney for Baltimore City, came out just today saying that she had concerns about, about something like this happening. But there are a lot of discussions about how to have more independent investigations and more independent prosecutions when there are police misconduct issues and certainly when there are police-involved shootings. And the issue being, it's not just a, an issue for a police department to be investigating its own officers and the bias that would come in that type of an investigation. But there's also bias that exists in terms of the State's Attorney's Office that would be in charge of prosecuting such a case because the State's attorneys have to work very closely with the law enforcement agencies in their jurisdiction on a regular basis if they want to prosecute all of their other cases successfully. So this is one of the reasons why Montgomery County and Howard County have an MOU so that in situations in Montgomery County, that Howard County State's Attorney's Office will prosecute those cases and vice versa. But outside of the agreement between Montgomery and Howard, there are no other agreements or, I think, policies to have any independent prosecutions in any other counties or in Baltimore City. Senator Smith also mentioned LEOVR, the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights. He specifically mentions the liability caps for local governments in police misconduct cases. Those are currently held to the tort claims liability caps. And he also mentioned the duty to intervene, the putting a ban on the purchase of surplus military equipment. That's a conversation that's come up a number of times. And I will mention, it's not, I don't think that Montgomery County Police use it significantly, but there are agencies such as Bicomico County and Hartford County and Frederick County that really utilize that program. I expect to see another conversation really come up about SWAT teams and no-knock warrants and reporting on the use of SWAT teams. And then civilian review is a topic that comes up repeatedly in different contexts. One of the things that happened in 2016 is this, to sort of respond to the request from the public to have a civilian member of review boards of police misconduct cases. The, they created a way to sort of have a civilian, a civilian member participate. But they left it, it, what happened was, it sort of, it left to the local police departments to choose a civilian member to be a member on that board. And that individual has to receive a 40-hour training from the Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission. And what came up yesterday in the work group was that at this point in time, there are no, no agencies have applied for training for a civilian member. So even though in 2016, they tried to have a procedure and a, a method to have that So even though in 2016, they tried to have a procedure and a method to have that civilian review, it hasn't happened. And then I will also have a link to a letter that went from the ACLU of Maryland and signed by over 60 organizations with their list of demands for police accountability in Maryland. It is similar to a number of the topics that were, have been mentioned already by the House Work Group and by Senator Smith, such as reform of LEOVR. I should, so there are some people who are talking about reform of LEOVR, and then there's repeal of LEOVR. And that is going to be a significant discussion moving forward. Maryland is one of only 16 states that has a Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights, and there will be a very strong push to get rid of it altogether, which will probably be one of the more contentious issues. 2016 did attempt to reform it, but I don't, I don't know that those reforms were really significant enough to make any changes. There's also an ask from advocates about putting the control of the Baltimore City Police Department within Baltimore City's control. Again, the MPIA reform and limits on the use of force. And then also unique to the advocates' demands are the removal of school resource officers from all schools. So basically a prohibition on having school resource officers. That is also going to be a big topic that is probably going to be quite contentious in a lot of different angles, I think, on that. So I'm going to stop my share. So that is an overview of what is an extremely complicated issue that is going to be continually changing, but I think that encompasses a majority of where the conversation is going to be. There will be a lot of other bills that get mentioned, and I think as the, certainly as the House Work Group starts to get, do a really deep dive, they're going to, I, I think we're all going to learn a lot and probably come up with, you know, new ideas for what we need to do. I will say, one of the things that really just stood out to me in the review from Department of Legislative Services on the bills that have passed from 2016 until now is they are all reactive. And so whenever we have looked at this issue of police accountability, best practices, it's all reactive, and we have not taken a proactive stance. And still a lot of, you know, so right now, we are in that reactive stage, we, but if there's ways to think of being proactive and ways of moving beyond just the things that have been highlighted as problems, like, you know, that's how we're going to get to some real lasting change. But I think right now, we have a lot of learning to do and to try and really understand how all of these different policies interact. And beyond legislation, there's certainly the issue of the police union contracts and how that's also has its own, you know, set of issues independent of what the legislature can do. But this, it's an important conversation that really should have happened long before now, and I'm, I'm really, I will say that the Speaker and Vice Chair Aterberry both made very strong comments about, yes, this is another work group about police accountability. Yes, we have had these work groups before. This time is different. And, you know, I will point out, this is the first time we've ever had an African-American speaker, or, you know, we haven't had a Senate President. But to have people in positions of leadership who have experienced, you know, these issues firsthand, and they both told personal stories, I think is, is going to be really helpful in making a change more of a reality and making it meaningful. I, I think the focus really has to be on that meaningful policy change. So, and I'll do my best to answer questions.
Great. Well, thank you so much for that presentation this evening. I think one of the questions I have before turning over my colleagues is, I know you said the working group was going to have a public hearing on August 8th, and you're still waiting for some information about how that's going to go. But as you know, I know you watch many of our meetings, yeah, it was just last week. We had a town hall with our D-20 delegation talking about these issues, and our police chief was with us late into the evening last Wednesday night as well, talking about these issues specifically here in Tacoma Park. So much of what we're able to do here in the city is dependent upon what happens also in Annapolis. Is there a role or in terms of thinking about what's going to be taking place this summer that you think the city should be plugging into these conversations that are happening?
So the, I think that the public hearing is going to be on the 6th. It hasn't been posted yet, it was just mentioned at the end, so I have in my notes the 6th. I will also make sure that the council, I watch all of the, I'll be watching all the work groups and taking notes, and I'm happy to share them with you all as we go along. The, I think there's certainly a very important role that the city can play here because there's going to be a lot of discussion about Baltimore City Police. And this is an issue way beyond Baltimore City. Baltimore City is going to have its own issues, but these are issues that exist within every police department, even the ones that are trying really hard, as I think you all know. There's, there are a lot of local, whether it's municipalities or counties, especially once you get out of the big jurisdictions of Montgomery County and Howard County and Anarunzal and Baltimore County. The rest of the state is governed mostly, but the police departments are all sheriff's departments. And it sets up a very different dynamic in the rest of the state because they're elected sheriffs. And the way that they typically have gotten elected is by a law and order type of approach to how they talk about policing. It's a very different conversation than the conversation that your police chief had last week. And because you, you have a chief who I think is really committed to trying to have the best department and to really understand these issues and is taking these issues very seriously, to the extent that that advocacy can happen with the, you know, his colleagues. There's, they have their own association. The same goes for MML. There are a lot of municipalities in the state that may not have police departments because they're not big enough. But those of you that do should be talking to each other. You know, I think that there are, you know, mayors and city councils in other parts of the state. I'm from Salisbury, down the eastern shore. I have seen a lot of activity from the city of Salisbury of making what are really major progressive statements for my hometown. And so, you know, I think that the municipalities and for the elected officials that are like you, the networking that you can do and the conversations that you can have and that the city can lead with other municipalities that are of a similar size, that also have law enforcement agencies, that voice is going to be really important, and it's going to be important for them to hear it at the state level as well. And so I think there's a way to, to advocate that you're, to raise the concerns too and say, this is where the state law prohibits us from doing, you know, something that we want to do. I think there's a, a big advocacy role that the city can play there.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman, see your seat.
Thank you so much. This is a really helpful presentation. As the mayor mentioned, you know, we met with District 20 last week, and I will say that on their list of priorities, one of the items that was noted was the school resource officers in school. So it, it may be, you know, not as, as part of Senator Smith's list of priorities, but I do know that the District 20 delegation is committed to, to moving something in that regard forward. Another point that you raised, which I think is, is really pertinent, is, you know, how do you change, we could do all of the things that, that we've noted, right? We can get rid of the law enforcement bill of rights, we could get rid of the school resource officers, we could do more training about racial sensitivity and awareness and race equity. But how do we change the minds of policing? You know, away from strictly enforcement to one of community? Do we, community building, community, you know, kind of protecting a community instead of like this warrior mentality, as the chief mentions all the time? Has there been any talk in, you know, perhaps in Annapolis about funding alternative approaches or alternative models to policing? So coming up with, you know, different structures, different approaches to policing and incentivizing the creation of those types of models? I know folks are, you know, not in session right now, and maybe that's something that may come up as people are having discussions once everyone is back, but that's one thing that comes to mind for me. And another point is all of the other disparities that exist, which lead to, you know, delicate Wilkins brought up time and time again, this whole, this whole problem of criminalizing poverty, right? So how do we work to address the plethora of inequities that we know exist? Specifically, as it relates to access to mental health services, which has been drastically underfunded in the state for a very long time? So, you know, it would be interesting to hear, you know, once folks are kind of through this work group, or maybe when they're back in session about those types of efforts as well. Because I think, you know, the policing is one piece, but we're dealing with an entire web of, you know, systematic oppression of marginalized groups. And, you know, policing is one part, but there's a lot of other pieces. And I would be interested to hear if there are others that are thinking along those lines. But thank you so much for this presentation, it's been great.
That's, so I think that's a great question and point overall. And I'll, I'll say that while we're having this conversation right now about policing, if we just go back a few months to COVID too, I think we can look right now at the moment that we are in and say, from this global pandemic, we can now see where we are failing as a society to protect the people that are marginalized populations. Communities of color in general are disproportionately affected, whether we're talking about public health inequities that are exacerbated, and we can see right now how that is playing out in terms of a pandemic. We can look at the issues of housing, where we have always highlighted these problems that have existed in housing, and we can say, look how bad it is, and look how bad it has gotten in such a short period of time because of the pandemic. We can look at, you know, employment and workers and the people that are, you know, working on chicken farms and whether they're migrant workers, they're being, right now, forced to work in unsafe and unsanitary conditions. Their health is being put, you know, at great risk. And like, I, the pandemic itself has exacerbated so many of these problems, and they are all tied together. And it's, it's from education, it's housing, it is all of these things. And there are a number of organizations that have talked about how, you know, when we look at issues such as gun violence, we need to talk about root causes of gun violence. And root causes of gun violence are communities that don't have any economic opportunities. It is communities that don't have adequate education to provide opportunities to, it's, it is all so connected. And when we're talking about the issue of policing, it is a big part of that entire puzzle. And so we have touched on the issue of the need to put more resources into, when we're talking about our schools, the idea of community schools, just as we talk about community-based policing and community policing practices. We talk about them, but we haven't fully invested and we haven't really given those discussions like that big opportunity. So as long as we are prioritizing and ensuring that there's a school resource officer in every school, but ignoring the fact that we do not have a school nurse in every school, and we're not mandating school nurses to be available in every school, like, we're, that doesn't go together. We are part of the causes for why we even need the police in the first place, and then we also have this huge issue of putting requirements on police to be doing jobs that they shouldn't be involved in. And we talk about behavioral health issues, you know, substance use issues, mental health issues, it's all tied together, and we have been defunding those issues for a really long time while increasing funding on policing. And how do we turn the ship at this point? It's, it's going to be hard. But I think that having the, the conversation, I was just so impressed with the conversations that you all are having and the work that you're doing to try and figure this out. I think there's some good conversations too about, you know, what it looks like in a large municipality or for a county government to, you know, have alternative models and move funding sources around that might be going to policing now to move it somewhere else to invest in these other, you know, areas, like whether it's mental health or, you know, having social services do interventions. How does it work when you're at the smaller municipal level where you are? And how do we make that, how do we make that work? And so that's one of those things I'm actively trying to get some information on. I will put a pitch in at the end and say, there has been legislation for violence intervention and prevention practices, and that there's a program that actually exists statewide, and the General Assembly passed legislation to have $3 million go into that prevention fund, and the governor vetoed it. And he vetoed it while also saying that the legislature didn't pass his crime plan. So, you know, it's, that's one of those disconnects that continues to exist. But some of these conversations are happening, they are not happening at the level that they need to, and hopefully we're going to start seeing them reach that appropriate level. But, you know, I, certainly mental health issues are going to come up again, and the serious need to be putting better funding and resources into that because that's one of those real, you know, policing issues where that's a responsibility that has been left to them, and, and I don't think anyone feels like that's the appropriate role. And I don't think anyone feels like that's the appropriate role.
See, I have Councilmember Smith and then the City Manager.
Ms. Wilkerson, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. It's always great to hear from you, what's going on at the state level. I believe that this is a once a generation opportunity, that we could really do some big things, but we need transformational leadership that sees that this is just not a police issue, that the courts are a big part of it, that prosecution DAs are a big part of it, that the prison system is also a big part of why Black and Brown people are in the position that they are in now. I just hope that, you know, when you are keeping your finger on the bills that are coming out, that implicit bias training, that there is any pure-reviewed research that says that it actually works, that most of the research says that you can actually, you know, people can sit in any type of training session on implicit bias. And once they are finished, they answer all the questions correctly, their behaviors don't change. So I think we have to, we have to dig deeper. You know, we have to see how we can really, really make a change for the better, for not just Black and Brown communities, but for the entire country. You mentioned MML. MML, a preview, I think, will get into the Black Lives Matter issue. I can't say exactly how that's going to happen, but it is a topic that we have discussed in the Executive Committee. The LUG's president, Ryan Spiegel, put out a statement that the Executive Committee did okay before it went out. So, I mean, we're going to try, I think, to shepherd the membership and have people actually have real reforms, not just statements, but real reforms that are going to change how we view policing in this state. Question I have, can you give some historical background on the Law Enforcement Bill of Rights? How did we get it? Because if, my understanding, it's unique to Maryland. Not a lot of states have Law Enforcement Bill of Rights. When I was on the Legislative Committee for the Maryland Municipal League, it always came up. It always hampered what we could do and true reforms. So it would be nice to hear from someone, an expert like you, that's been around the corridors of the General Assembly for many years. Why do we have it? What started it? So, thank you.
Yeah, so the Law Enforcement Officer Bill of Rights, LEOBR, Leo Bur as others might call it, it is fairly unique to Maryland. So we're one of 16 states of habit, and it's my understanding that it pretty much originated in Maryland. And I have not done my full history lesson to figure out what the initial incident was that prompted it. But I can tell you, it is here because of police unions and FOP. And the reason it hasn't been changed, the reason it hasn't gone anywhere, because of the police unions and the FOP. And I can tell you that the biggest obstacle to real change are going to be the unions and the FOP. They carry a lot of weight. And they will put all of the pressure that they can on legislators when it comes time to what those votes are going to be. And that happened in 2016. So in the 2016 session, prior to being a lobbyist, when I was still on a staff side, I clearly remember the debates that were going on in the Senate Judicial Proceedings Committee at that time, trying to reform the LEOBR. And the bill, the bills that were being introduced, this was at a time where most people still didn't sit in on vote sessions. And certainly, if it was your bill, you did not sit in the front row and make your presence really known. The FOP and the police unions were in the room, they sat in the rows, they actively were texting members of the committee as discussions were being had. And at the time, Senator McFadden was there, and he had been put on the committee specifically to have more Baltimore City representation after Freddie Gray and with these issues coming up. And he was very outspoken about the, what he considered to be threats that he was receiving, about how he was going to vote. And he was talking about how the text messages he was receiving as they were happening. And he started reading them out loud to other committee members to try and, you know, raise awareness about how the unions were really trying to push the legislators. And there were a lot of issues that happened where there was a major reform bill that was on the table more than what even passed. And this came up for me in like a Facebook memory where on Sinny Die. It was like four years ago, and I had posted something saying, waiting for the final vote on LEOBR, and it was like 10:30 at night on Sinny Die. And that is because of all of the controversy that goes on around it. And I'll say Delegate Deborah Davis asked a question about it at the work group yesterday, where she was trying to make the point, which is, if LEOBR didn't exist, would it prohibit police officers from being employed? No, they'd still be unemployed. The rules would just be different. And so at that point in time, that is when they said there will be a full presentation on the LEOBR. And so I can make sure you're aware of when it's going to be. And for the public, they check the Police Accountability Work Group meetings. They do put a short agenda up of what the topics are going to be. So I really recommend that people tune in to that presentation when it happens, because I think it's going to be a lot of information for all of us.
I appreciate any advance notice. That'd be great. Thank you for the presentation.
They maybe do like 48 hours advance notice on the agenda. So I'll do my best on the advanced.
Sorry, I was muted. City Manager had a comment or question.
Yes, I have just three very brief points. I know it's late. In looking through your presentation, you noted that there were a number of things that might be looked at, such as setting standards on use of force. I just want to make sure that as, if we actually exceed some standards, that we're not precluded from still exceeding those standards. So that's, you know, making sure that we don't have to get lowered to a different standard. You touched on it, but mental health care is a state issue. And to not have that really as the state takes ownership, I think, is a problem. And finally, as we go through this, we do have to worry about unfunded mandates. And so just as a very small jurisdiction with very little money, obviously, we're very interested in having appropriate policing and controls and public safety and care for our communities. But we also need to make sure that we're not having to do something that costs a lot of money that may be fine for a larger jurisdiction, but really is very difficult for a small municipality. That's all.
Great. Thank you so much. I know we will continue these conversations with you, and we do look forward. Thank you for keeping track of the working group on these issues, and we look forward to your notes. And at any point, if you see, it's a good opportunity for us to be plugging in and doing some more, we look forward to that as well. So thank you for coming this evening. And I think one of the things that we need to do as a city council, and we don't need to start tonight, but I'd ask my colleagues to start thinking about it, which is our legislative priorities moving forward for the next session. You know, we have two ways that we do this. One is the legislative actions that we can put into MML and request that. And we can look to our colleague, Councilmember Smith, for maybe some insights into what may be good things to submit on that, as well as, we can also adopt other priorities for the session in Annapolis next year. So I asked my colleagues to start thinking about that. We do have a work session coming up on particularly the MML Legislative Action Request, but to also be thinking broader than that as well. So thank you again for the presentation tonight and the discussion. Our last item this evening is an update on the elections. Am I turning this over to the City Clerk?
So, yes, once again, I'll get us started at least. So it was just last week that the Board of Elections provided its recommendation to the City Council to hold the election by mail on the November 3 election by mail in order to protect the health of voters and election workers. While we hope and anticipate that most ballots will be mailed in, we recognize that not all ballots will be. And some people will need to be able to vote in person. This would include voters who need to use a ballot marking device, voters who don't receive a ballot in the mail or misplace the ballot, voters who are not yet registered, and I'm sure there'll be other reasons as well. So for this purpose, we anticipate opening at least one location on Election Day for voting. To effectively conduct a vote-by-mail election, there are a few changes that will be needed to the city charter. The city attorney is reviewing this, but we had to, I put together a schedule for a proposed charter amendment. And mainly, the sections of the charter that need to be revisited is the date that the council takes office, because it is very close to the election at this point. The council takes office the second Wednesday following the election. And it is highly unlikely that a canvas could be completed quickly enough to enable the council to take office that fast. So it will need to be at some other time in November. Additionally, the Board of Elections would be required to certify the results of the election in 48 hours. And obviously, in the case of a vote-by-mail election, that will not be possible. There are also a few minor changes to the city code related to absentee voting that may need to be changed, but we have a slightly longer timeline to look at that. The other thing I'll mention for the council to start thinking about is one of the sections in the city charter related to write-in candidates. We have the preregistration process for a write-in candidate to register with the city clerk three business days prior to the start of early voting. And if they do that, they can have their name posted in the voting booth. And this will not, the timing doesn't make sense in a vote-by-mail election, nor does the posting of names in a voting booth. So we would recommend that you take a look at that as well, and we'll have a recommendation on that. So with that, that's my quick briefing on what's been happening since last week. I provided a schedule for recommended charter and code amendments. And in order to be ready for the election, the Charter Amendment public hearing will need to be held on July 15, as Mayor Stewart mentioned, at the beginning of the meeting. And then the Charter Amendment will proceed to first and second vote. The second vote would take place on July 22. I'm sorry, the, I'm sorry, the second vote would take place on Wednesday, July 29, and the Charter Amendment would be effective on September 17. So it's a tight timeline, and I hope that the council will consider making the amendments. Brian Ernst, the Chair of the City Board of Elections, is here tonight, is on Zoom tonight, along with Arthur David Olson. And they would be happy to hear any feedback you have or any comments, and they can answer any questions you might have. As it can lie.
Terrific. Thank you so much. I guess the one question I have, is there anything as the Board of Elections? Well, first, thank you to the Board of Elections. I know an election year is always a busy year for the Board of Elections, but you all are putting in double overtime on this, and we appreciate you thinking through all these issues. After looking at, thank you for providing the information before the meeting and posting it on the city website. I don't have any questions specifically about it, but I would like to know whether or not the members of the Board of Elections have any questions or want any feedback initially from the city council so that as you deliberate on your recommendations to us, we could provide you with some useful information or even just some thoughts we may have on things that you're considering at the moment, given how tight the timeframe is.
I guess that's, to me, we're happy to get questions, I think, in particular on the the council's, I think, overall feeling on vote-by-mail, but then also on some of the key issues on, for example, the postmark date for ballots. Can they be received on Election Day? I think that would align with how it's been done by the state and the county. And then also on some of the charter and code issues that the City Clerk has raised as well.
Great. All right. If any members of the council, Councilwoman Kostick, I see your hand.
Thank you. First, I just want to reiterate the mayor's thanks to you. I feel like we started off giving you a tall challenge in terms of shifting the elections to the even years from odd years, and now it's just exponentially grown in terms of the change and work that you all have to do. So thank you very much. Just a few questions slash thoughts, and I'll just toss them all out and don't necessarily need answers just this moment. But I did want to just raise a couple of questions and my thoughts on some of the initial things that you sent. One is, I wondered whether we need to look at the dates for people who are registering as new voters. And I assume that you all have thought about this, but I wondered, will people still be able to register the day of the election? And I would like, I think, to make sure that we are very clear also about what the last day is for people to register in order to receive a mailed ballot, because that could also be important to people who want to register in time to receive that. I think last time we talked about this, I remember maybe Councilmember Cersei raising a question about changes that might happen, need to happen to the nominating process to make that virtual potentially, or other changes. So I'd just be interested in thoughts on that. With regard to the preregistration of write-in candidates, your proposal to post on the website seemed to make a lot of sense to me. And then I would think, post their names in the voting booth for those who are coming in person to vote. But it does seem to me that we want to maintain some things in the changes that we make for this year to also allow for, for there not to be such significant changes that in future years, it doesn't make sense. I guess if we do an election in the future when COVID is not an issue, we could still do a mail-in election, but also just to make sure that we're making changes that can be sort of applicable in different scenarios. And then I had a question about the, if I'm understanding correctly, there was a note in the cover memo about Chapter 520. And if two ballots were received from someone taking in the cover memo about Chapter 520, and if two ballots were received from someone taking the first ballot, and I was curious why that was the common practice and the recommendation, since it seemed to me maybe, maybe someone would potentially submit a second ballot, feeling they had changed their mind or something like that. So I wondered what the recommendation was on that.
Did, Brian, do you want to respond to anything?
Brian, do you want to respond to that?
Sure. So, a lot of questions there. I think some of them, we don't have answers to yet. On dates for registering, I mean, I think that's a good point, especially for people who would like to receive a ballot mailed to them. Of course, same-day registration would still be available to those who show up in person, but on the mailing, we would have to, we would have to set a deadline for when that would be. The nominating caucus, I know that came up in one of the previous discussions, and I think we would just have to think through how that would work, but especially as a virtual event. But I don't think we have any new insights since the question came up for preregistration of write-ins. I think that makes sense. I mean, the website, we'll keep thinking about what works there. I mean, depending on the timing of mailings and when the materials have to be in, like you could add a name in the actual mailing, but I think it, timing is probably not going to work there, because the, when people would register as a write-in to when the vendor would need the, and might not align. And then, I guess, any other changes on the, the timing of the absentee's first received versus second received? Yes, so, this is a tricky question. So the county accepts the first-received ballot, and they, after that, they don't, anything else that comes in is not counted. Part of the reason for that is, once they receive ballot, they start processing it. So they start going through the process of verifying signatures, putting that person as having voted in there, in the voter register, et cetera. And so, then to get a second ballot, they might not be able to go back and undo all that they've already done. So we have that in mind. There's also, I think, somewhat of a question is how someone would be able to send in a second ballot? They're only getting one in the first place, where would the second ballot be coming from? And you can lose a ballot, that's certainly possible, and then you can get a replacement, but then you wouldn't have sent it in already. So we also were trying to figure out a scenario in which you could send in a second ballot without it being somehow received or gotten from another person or another place. So all of those were part of our discussion on why it might make more sense to just take the first one, allows for the processing to begin of absentee ballots, and then also, is it actually creating a situation where someone wouldn't be able to, to vote?
Could you foresee a situation where someone might mail in a ballot and then also come to vote the day of?
Yes, it is possible, and I know in the past, we have had that be the case, and we could, you could come in and vote, and then we would, I think, go through the absentees and then take out their absentee ballot. But then, I think, hopefully would, you know, we would have to decide if that's the case on accepting the first ballot received, then coming in the day of would, might not be a pop, an option, and, and using that.
If I could add, the, it's a different, the situation is very different when we're talking about absentee ballots in a regular election, where we might have 100 or 150. And if somebody comes in to vote, and they're already marked as having sent an absentee ballot, I can just go to the box that contains the absentee ballots, and we can, you know, we can destroy that and take their vote. We couldn't, in a vote-by-mail scenario where we need to start processing ballots as they're received, it wouldn't be practical to, to do that. Once the ballot is separated from the envelope, you, it cannot come back. It's, so that, that's already, you can't take that vote back, it's, it's gone. And the state, the state code has a first ballot received rule. So we could continue to look at it, but it's, my thinking is that in order to get the canvas moving, that we don't want to hold everything to wait to see if there's a second ballot that came in, because you can't, once you vote, you can't really change your mind and take it back. It doesn't work that way, really, if that's the situation, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. I just want to add to Councilwoman Kostic's comments, particularly regarding registration, is thinking about 16- and 17-year-olds registering and non-US citizens. I know there's a lot up in the air, but I do think as soon as we can start communicating out to 16- and 17-year-olds and non-US citizens about ways that they could start registering now, and have that in place, particularly since a lot of the high school students are done with school now, and they're out, it's a little harder to communicate with them, being out of school and everything, but I think the more we can get that information out. In addition, given the outreach that we're doing with some of the programs for COVID-19 relief and assistance, if there's some way to also be sending out information about voting in the upcoming election, I think would be really useful to people as well. You know, I, I know we talk about it a lot, but it is still, there are a lot of people in our community who do not know that 16- and 17-year-olds and non-US citizens who are residents here can vote, so I think that would be good. Let's see, Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I support the recommendations the Board of Elections presented, that I think those, those are good. Some of the questions that I have, has the Board of Elections looked at drop-off boxes around the city for, for people that don't have a mailbox nearby, or transportation is difficult to get their mail-in ballot to the community center? Has that, has anyone done a analysis of that? And where would you put them?
So I can say, yes, we've thought about the drop-off boxes. I can't say we've done a thorough analysis on locations at this point. We're just now really going into the details of some of these items in an all-mail election. That being said, I think there's a lot of usefulness in having drop-off boxes. You have to consider security, though, as well, make sure they're in locations that they can be secure for a long period. But, you know, drop-off boxes also save the city on postage if we're doing return postage on ballots, so it's, there's a lot of value in doing it, not just for the city, but also with the voters, and so it's something we're looking at implementing, but I can't say where or the coverage of those would be at this point.
I asked the question about whether or not a charter change needs to be made for a virtual swearing-in. Has the city attorney's attorney provided an opinion?
Not yet.
Okay. All right. And then finally, I, I think that, you know, the council, I believe, did a straw vote and said that this was the direction that we're going to go. I think we need to put together a huge marketing campaign to, to make sure that people not just know about 16- and non-documented folks voting, but everybody, because this is going to be a huge change for residents. People are not going to see this coming, but we need to make sure everybody knows that this is how the election is going to happen this year. So thank you, guys, for all your work on this. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman DeBala?
Yes, thanks so much. Thanks to the board for all the work. As Casey said, you had one huge job, and, and now it's just so much bigger. And your recommendations, they make sense to me on the charter, on the city code. It seems to me that that's the least of our worries at the moment. I agree with both the mayor and Councilmember Smith, that, well, let me put, let me rephrase it. I would like to hear your recommendations about how to do an outreach program, because I agree, we, we need to do that, and we need to start sooner. Many of my questions have already been asked. The one that has perhaps not is the, the timing of the nominating committee versus when the ballot needs to be ready to hand to the printer. So if someone could just think through, maybe you already have, to make sure that that will still give enough time to have the ballots that then can be mailed that will get there in time with the slowness of all that. I appreciate a recommendation on that. Thank you.
I think that it's a great question on the timing, and I don't have a, an answer yet. I think a lot will also be on what we hear back from vendors who do the mailing, what their timing will be. But, yeah, we can get back to you on that once we have more information.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, and thanks for all the information, and I also support the charter amendments and the other recommendations. Just a few questions. I know it's, it's late, and we want to wrap up soon. On the postmark issue, I think that makes better sense than saying that it has to be received by the day of, because you never know what might happen in terms of mail. But I guess the one question I, the two questions I had about that are, one, what would that do in terms of extending the time, which it would take to count and certify the votes, and at what point you just sort of say, okay, well, we got enough mail in, there might still be some out there, but we're going to cut it off now and count it and declare the winner?
That's a great question. We were actually just discussing it this week a little bit on deadlines for when this would be received, even if it's, was like, if your postmark day is Election Day, then what to say, like, we're, you know, off here, and this, any ballots received after this will not count? That is, common practice is people set, is election boards will set a date that it's the final day to receive mail. One of the things we're also be looking at is Postal Service does do tracking of election mail, so in, hopefully, we would have a good sense of how the mail is going through the US Postal Service system. And I, my guess is, like, if you set a, probably around a week or so after the postmark day or Election Day, I mean, that you would receive all of your ballots at that point. There might be a, the unlikely occurrence that that's not the case, but hopefully not.
Okay. I can mention that the, for state special elections, the deadline for receiving the ballots is 10 days after the election. That may be longer than we need, but that's what the state practice is right now.
Okay. I don't personally think that fraud is a big problem here or anywhere really in the election system, but in the recent state mail-in process for the primary, I did hear from some people who said they were still getting ballots at home for their children, for example, who no longer live there, who had previously been registered there, and so I don't know if there are specific steps we need to take to just clean that up before we undertake this, but we obviously don't, don't want to have any of that, if we can, if we can avoid it. That can be answered later, unless it's, there's an obvious answer to it.
I think, so, there's a, I think, a couple points on this. One would be, and the county is responsible for the majority of the voter register in this case. However, I think maybe Arthur David can speak to this more. DC did send out a mailer, I think, prior to the election, or is, I'm trying to get information from people, I'm not quite sure if there was a difference there, but maybe Arthur David has more on that.
Yes, in the recent Maryland primary, what the state did was mail ballots unsolicited to everyone who was an active registered voter. The approach that the District of Columbia took in its primary was to mail absentee applications to everyone, and then, of course, send the mail-in ballots to those people who sent the application back. Clearly, sending the ballots to people does a better job of encouraging people to vote by mail, because you only have to do one thing rather than having to do two things. As Councilmember Kovar indicated, going through that extra step is a way where you can try to minimize fraudulent ballots. Obviously, if you send both a ballot application and then the ballot later, you are looking at two mailings rather than one mailing, and that increases the cost of conducting the election.
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely be against doing that twice. I just wonder if there's some other way to address that. But I, just two other questions. You know, when you vote in person, you get a receipt, and you essentially know that your vote was received and counted. I suppose that doesn't really happen when you mail it in. Is there any system for people being, given a receipt? You know, again, we don't want to mail back to everybody that they got it, but is that an issue that comes up in other places that do this?
Councilmember Kovar, the city of Rockville published a list of all, they actually published a list of all the voters whose ballots were received, that they updated periodically. So they did it in a really, really transparent way. I don't know if that would work best for us or not, but it is the case that, and the state does this as well, you can check to see if your ballot has been received. It takes a while after receipt for it to be entered into the system, but you can confirm that your ballot was received.
Okay.
When you vote in person, you don't get a receipt. You, I mean, you vote, you see your ballot put into the system, so you know you cast a ballot, but you don't get anything that tells you.
Well, I guess the only thing we'd have to think about in terms of publicizing it, the names would be whether the non-citizen voters, we would, we would want to take that step. The only other thing I would say, as several of my colleagues mentioned, I think it's just a really, really big part of this, and I guess there's money associated with it, but we really need to have an advertising program, because I could include it in the material I send out every week from now until the election, and lots of people just, you know, not for any malicious reason, it just, it's hard to have things like this enter into people's consciousness, and we've talked a lot up until a week ago, over the past several years, about how we're making the switch to the even years, so that when people go vote for president and these other elections, then they'll get a chance to vote for City Council, too. Now, that whole process is no longer going to apply, but I think if that's built up at all in the public consciousness, that makes it even a little bit harder to shift the, you know, the ocean liner, to get people to understand that there's this new approach here. And so, in addition to the ballot itself, I think we're going to have to do a lot to alert people to the reality that this is going on, and that may end up costing some additional funds. Now, maybe we save some money by not putting on the elections at the, at the, at the five sites and so on, but I really agree very much with my colleagues that we're going to have to do more than we may think we are right now about that. And that, that's the last, last point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cersei?
Hello, I want to echo my colleague's sentiments about all of the hard work that you all have put in, and thank you so much for, for all of your efforts. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I do think that making sure that we're able to do that, that blitz, to try to encourage folks to register to vote, making sure that we're able to translate a lot of those materials into various languages in the community, and that we're able to come up with a vehicle for the outreach that would allow us to gain access into multifamily buildings, right? So even if it were an insert in our newspaper, like making sure that, that those materials would likely reach intended households. I also want to encourage us to think about, like, currently, our process for, for registering to vote, is that typically paper-based, or can folks register online? Or, I can't remember how I register. But if it is the case that it's a paper-based system, we may want to think about some alternatives that would allow us to better be able to deal with a large, potentially a larger influx of folks registering for the first time, and making sure that we can provide them with an ability to do that remotely. And I, I sent a note previously about, one of the residents told me that one of the, the problems with the state vote-by-mail was that although the ballots and, and some of the major instructions were translated, not all of the instructions, in terms of like how to actually submit, and were translated. So, let's just, you know, make sure that when we're thinking about translating materials for vote-by-mail, it's more than just translating the ballots. You'll also have to translate all of the instructions of how to submit the ballots, where to submit the ballots. If we are providing folks with drop-offs, making sure that all of that material is translated as well. And, and that might actually, you know, it could potentially increase the translation costs, but I think it'll be really important to make sure that people understand fully what they're being asked to do. But again, thank you all so much for, for all of the hard work that you've put in.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kostic, did you have another question or comment?
Yeah, I just had one quick question, also related to registration. I was thinking about people who are turning 16 and wondering if there is the capacity for people to register before they turn 16 so that they could potentially receive that mail-in ballot, so they don't have to be required to vote in person, because they're not able to register until the day or two before.
Yes, we've revised the city voter registration form to enable a person who will be 16 on the date of the election to register with the city. Now, and that will work for receiving the city ballot, how that will work with receiving in the event the state has vote-by-mail, how that will work for them. I am not, well, it won't matter. Let me take that back. Right. So our, our process is, we can accept that application if they'll be 16 on the date of the election. Had to think out loud for a minute there.
Great. So at the moment, considering I have a 16-year-old in my household, and she keeps asking me this question, because she did not register when she turned 16. If you are a 16 or 17-year-old now and actually listening to our council meeting tonight, and you're not registered to vote, what should they do?
If they, what they should do is go online, and if they, if they have a learner's permit, and they may not, but if they do, they can go online and do their, complete their registration online. If not, they can fill out the paper form, put the last four digits of their social security number on the form and mail it. If we were in the community center, I could say they could drop it off, and we will mail it for them, but I can't say that right now. But, but that can be completed through the mail at this time. So the, that your daughter or anyone turning 16, who is 16, can register with the state, and then we will receive that information from the state that they're a registered voter. Does that make sense? They don't need to register with the city if they register with the state.
Okay, and they can do that if they're 16?
If they're 16, they can do that. And that's the best thing to do.
Okay.
But short of that, they can always register with the city form, and, and we can allow them to vote with that.
Okay. And then people who are residents but not citizens need to use the city form, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So those folks need to use the city form. Somebody who is 16 now can register with the state, and they will be put on our list.
Yes.
Awesome. All right. Well, that was helpful. Good. All right. Well, I'm seeing no other hands. My general sense from council is that we're still supportive of moving forward with moving to a mail election for this election in the fall. General direction on where the Board of Elections is going looks good. We thank you again for your work. And in the meantime, if there are other questions you have for us, please let us know. And perhaps I'll work with the city clerk to see if we can make sure we do the vote, the election items a little earlier in the agenda. So, people don't have to, well, Arthur always waits till the end of our meeting. Maybe, maybe Mr. Ernst doesn't want to sit through our whole meeting for the next couple of weeks, so.
And Mayor Stewart, may, may I say that in, in the meantime, as councilmembers think about things or get ideas, please feel free to send them to me. I will share with the Board of Elections, and because we do, we want to hear from you, and we want to hear what you're hearing from your residents as well.
Great. Terrific. All right. Well, thank you very much. I think this was, this is the last item on our agenda this evening. So we are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.